Ms. Solano.
Ms. Solano.
Mr. Chairman, City Council, Mayor Gradisar. I have just one COVID update this evening and then turn over the rest of the city update time to the mayor who will share a report on the update with Wells Fargo Building. But the COVID update for as of today, there were three hundred and thirty point one cases for the last one week cumulative, which was down from last Friday of three hundred and fifty-two cases. The one-week positivity rate was five point nine today, which was down from last Friday as well. The state Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment website shows that we have six days of stabilized COVID-19 hospitalizations in the city. However, Parkview's inpatient COVID count was sixty-four last week, but today at fifty-nine. And I do not have any data from St. Mary's Corwin. So that is the COVID numbers for the day, and the only update I have is Mayor Gradisar to you.
Yeah, I'm going to give you a brief update on where we're at with respect to the Wells Fargo Building. You'll recall that the county purchased that building, it'll be a year ago in December. And since that time, we've been working with them trying to reach an agreement with respect to the city's purchase of three floors of that that building. We've reached a general agreement with respect to the ownership documents, the condominium declarations, the bylaws, how the operations of building will be governed, the structure of those kind of things. The city's hired an architect to look at our three floors. We're going to take floors four, five, and six. County's going to take the remaining floors. But we've been over there and have thoroughly inspected it. We've hired an architect that's now doing an evaluation of the mechanical and plumbing systems there and will report back to us in the next three, three and a half weeks, we think. So the delay that we're going to have in purchasing floors from them is when this building is condominiumized, we have to have a map. And the map has to be drawn by an engineering firm or by architects or surveyors to sort of details and outlines the condominium units, which are the limited common elements, which are the general common elements. The county's been responsible for retaining a firm to complete that map, and they've had some difficulty finding somebody who's interested in doing it. When we spoke last week, they hadn't yet had a sign. They've selected somebody. I think they've selected a local firm to do that, but they have not got a signed contract with them yet to do that. So that could take as long as sixty or ninety days to do that map. And that's a critical element before we can actually purchase the floors from them because those maps will contain the legal description. So we're moving ahead on that. We haven't had any discussions with the county with respect to price or anything, but we are making progress. We're moving forward. As I say, we've got an architect that's looking at the floors we're going to acquire and will determine and make a cost estimate to us of what it's going to cost us to remodel those floors that are suitable for for the use of our departments there. So and once we have all the documents completed and we purchase it, we estimate it'll take about eighteen weeks for construction to take place to 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 make the final repairs to the building. So that's what we're at on the Wells Fargo Building. Happy to answer any questions you might have with respect to that.
Questions, comments? Councilor Schilling.
Excuse me. Everybody, I want to give out truly a big yahoo to the mayor. Some of you got in a bind when he changed his mind on that purchase. If you remember, they wanted us to buy half of that building. We are now at three-eighths. We have spent no money on interest for almost a year for them to get this all together. So what happened, and some of you might have been mad, but it saves us tens of thousands of dollars and it saved us buying a half a building when we only need three-eighths. So A-plus on that building, Nick. That was just saved us all a ton of money and a ton of hassle. County's going through all the stuff that would have cost us a lot of money also. So it this worked out great. I hope you all are pleased with it.
Thanks. Councilor Flores.
Mayor Gradisar, can you kind of just generally tell us what offices will be moving into the sixth, the fourth, five, and sixth floor?
Ooh, boy. Is it? Yeah, I didn't bring the list, but we're all of sales tax and accounting, the finance department is moving over, fire department administration will be moving over, planning, zoning, public works, administrative part of public works will be moving over, housing department will be moving over from coming in from East Fourth Street in that building area, they'll be coming in and be downtown. That might be, that might be the list of the employees. At one time, we thought a hundred and sixty-five employees will be working from our offices for the city, but we'll, we'll have to confirm that as we, as we move forward. But it's, it's a pretty significant portion of our workforce, and I think it makes some sense for him to consolidate a lot of those operations and a lot of the people that are going to be working there will be available for public means business, the operation on the first floor that's there. So it's those kind of departments that will be intimately involved in that planning and permitting process that'll be in that building. So it's going to be a good move for us, get them into good space eventually.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for the update. I will move on to number two on the agenda, which is the public transit update. Mr. Valdez.
Great to see you. Thank you for coming. Evening. I'm waiting on Daryl to show me my slide. Yep? There we go. Now I'm good. Right on the right hand. This is Nick Hinnerstein. He's the operations supervisor for Pueblo Transit. He'll fill in the blanks where I can't fill them in. He generally does. This is the conceptual drawing of what a new A and M facility will look like for Pueblo Transit, when and if they do get enough funds, enough grant money to move. That is the conceptualized look of what it will actually lay out wise B. We're going to talk a little bit about the service concepts and objectives, the timeline of changes, past and future, our Nelson Nygaard study, our bus amenities, our Google Transit app, our new fleet, and our relocation study, which kind of let loose on some extended hours and some survey data that gave us a way forward. We'll show you what the financials for expanded service hours look like, what the current org chart looks like, and what the expanded org chart should be, and what the capital output will be. Pueblo Transit will provide a seamless transportation network that serves the employment, medical, educational, and shopping needs of Pueblo residents and visitors in a manner that is both comprehensive and efficient and allows for the transit system to grow and adapt with the city. Now, that is the statement that was come up with, that we decided was the way forward when it was all put together. We are far from efficient. We're comprehensive, but we have big gaps in service now as it is because the city's growing faster than we can possibly service with what we have available to us as far as for size and for means and for actual bodies to provide such services across the city. So some of our objectives are expanded hours of service, real-time customer bus tracking, capacity expansion, and added transfer points. This all started back in 2016. July of 2016, Nelson Nygaard came in to, to do their initial start of their study on the entire transit system within Pueblo, Colorado. So in February of 2017, they had finally completed everything and they did their initial presentation to city council on what they found. January of 2018 is the next steps. That's the implemental implement of the suggested route changes of the Belmont University. To change the Belmont University, they're redundant to each other as they go. They're both hour-long headways and they're both redundant. One goes one way, one goes the other. They overlap basically within a few blocks of each other all across town. And to begin implementing and investments into services and system. In 2018, also July timeframe is when our Facebook page finally came up with our rider alerts and our social media interaction and our marketing of the system and all the new changes we're putting in place. Basically, we're running backwards to forwards, trying to catch up because, let's be honest, I grew up in Bessemer. It's the same bus routes that I rode when I was going to high school. It's the same bus routes I rode when I was in middle school going to Corwin. They haven't changed. And you're trying to avoid a death spiral in, in the transit industry to expand and to meet the needs of the users as they see fit going forward. Part of the Nelson Nygaard study, those are the old routes as they exist. They had a whole listing of all the new routes and how they should look. They're not comprehensive to the way the city's growing at the rate in which it's growing. And to be quite frank, they were leaving out some pieces that we didn't feel were a hundred percent correct. Like, they changed the east side from a block-by-block route to a basic circular. So you're talking about people having to, having to travel across multiple blocks to find a bus stop when they used to have to go, you know, three or four houses down to a corner. They just don't work with the way it's changing and the way it's growing. So we're trying to come up with another concept to show that we can do it in a faster timeframe, but it's going to be a cost as far as for service on what we can put out on the street. In 2018, Payco paid for the relocation study based upon the outcomes of the Nelson Nygaard study. There's some, there's some requirements to funding from the federal transit administration for operation. One of them is, is the way you keep and you store your vehicles in a good state of repair and the way you maintain them. We have outgrown capacity. We, in the next two to three years with what we're purchasing to replace older and what we're bringing in, there's no more room at the end. We're going to be parking the oldest outside that we can possibly live with because there's no other way we're going to get away with it. And when you're talking about six hundred and fifty to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar vehicles per, it's a tough situation when you got to make those kind of decisions on what you're going to leave outside in the rain and what you're going to put inside at night when it's heated and air-conditioned. So in 2018, we started our bus amenity replacement. We installed a complete two-hundred-and-eight shelters and bus stops throughout the city with benches. We're continually moving those throughout the city on a weekly basis. What we find now is really, really interesting is that the closer your bus stop is to a bar or a liquor store, the bigger it becomes a congregation point for the public to hang out and drink beers during the day. But if you move the bench, they too shall go away. So that's a lot of what we've been doing lately. The ADA amenities are starting to get upgraded on a lot of different ones and a lot of the new things we're doing. A lot of the new construction in a lot of the areas around town, we're working with those people to actually pour a full ADA requirement pad for those services to come on and off with a, with a bus stop added into that line of line around town. In 2018, we launched our Google Transit. And that was when we had our first new bus on the horizon to be coming, which we have since received, and it's here and it's living large. In 2019, they completed their relocation study and we received our second hybrid bus. The first one was a 2010. This one is a 2019 complete diesel hybrid bus. Also in 2019, we started the site work and the environmental work from this, from the relocation study as it was done. Basically, we did all the environmental work to make sure that the site that we settled on would be able to build when we were ready to build. Now, in saying that, none of the actual architecture work has been done and none of the major planning has been done. It's all still conceptual as far as size and location requirements as they're going to be going forward. I can tell you that was the one that was originally put together. It was put together with all the requirements for going to a complete electric fleet as far as for size, capacity, power requirements. Even the selection of the site was done, taking that into account as to far as how far you're going to bring those services in. If you don't know where the location is, it's off a Erie. If you go to like where the old, the old CDOT building was and keep going straight down past Summit Brick and it butts right up against the US-50 bypass, right across the street from there, lo and behold, is a Black Hill substation, which is exactly what you need if you're going to run a full electric fleet within, you know, a block of where you're going to go. So those were a lot of the weighing factors on why we were going to go there. That and the fact that it's an eleven-acre parcel. It has two points of ingress and egress because the location we're in now, we have one. There's only one way in and out of that backyard with a bus, with a cutaway, with a service vehicle. There's only one. This gives you better access. This gives you better timing back and down to the transit center for swaps for maintenance and for whatever else you have to do. So also in 2019, we purchased three new City Live vans that have been running, up and running, and they're good to go. In 2021, we purchased a large plot of urban solar lights. There are currently two installed. There is one on the entrance to City Park where that bus stop is. You'll see there's a solar light right next to the bus stop, and there's one right across from the police station over here on Main Street where there's another solar light that's installed. We have a list of stops that are hard to see from a driver's perspective without on a bus early in the morning and late at night at dusk. So those are the first ones that are going to get lights as we move forward so that nobody's going to get passed up because nobody sees them standing there. Now, 2021 is when we also applied for the grant study for the north and south circulator. As we said before, we have an antiquated hub and spoke system. The only way to cut headway to, I guess the best way to phrase it is if you want to have a fifteen-minute interval versus a thirty-minute interval versus a sixty-minute interval is you have to have two different transfer points on the north and south side of town because the north side is expanding at a fast rate and the south side of town is also starting to expand at the same rate. So you have to have a circulator that will basically connect everything on the south side and everything on the north side with one bus that runs north and south from each location to connect with the downtown transit center to get where they want to go. Now, when we get them, when I get them with the whole timeline, Nick will expand upon the whole north and south circulator and the concept behind it and how it's supposed to work. 2022 going forward, we have funds and projects already set up for two hybrid buses that are coming in and three new City Live vans to replace it. That'll replace every pair of transit vehicle we have. They will all be 2017 or newer, which is one of the newest fleets in the state, and they all meet ADA standards and they don't have the maintenance issues we had in the past because we've went away from some of those things that caused those problems. In 2022, hopefully, knock wood, we'll be ready to purchase some site and start getting our route survey completed so we can see exactly how the north and south is going to intertwine with the rest of the system. And in 2020, 20XX, which we're thinking will probably be 2023, 2024, we can hopefully break ground on a new transit center. And that'll also be the year of our first full electric bus purchase. By 2023, the mileage should finally exceed the requirements for bus routes because now they don't make an electric bus that will have the capacity to do the miles required in the course of a day without having to come in and be charged. That tends to put a strain on the system and it'll deplete a battery fast and it'll run that whole system down a lot more and it'll just cause earlier battery changes that we want to stay away from. At fifty-five to sixty-five thousand dollar battery packs, you want to preserve the battery life as long as you possibly can. Also in the future, we're looking at the route changes that we want to implement on the east side, the north side, and the south side. And we want to institute a route to the airport probably more sooner than later to meet the needs of those businesses out there that have a workforce that has a need to get back and forth, and we feel we can actually provide that, but it's going to come at a cost to everybody going forward. And hopefully in the future, we can have a brand-new facility on a hundred percent full electrification because that is the way forward as we see it going. Nelson Nygaard highlighted some of our key, our key challenges in their study. A lot of that was frequent peak hour service from six to nine and three to six. Having enough vehicles to meet those demands and enough operators to meet those demands at a, at a smaller headway so that nobody gets left behind. Frequent midday service, evening and night service, Sunday service, Google Transit, real-time arrival app is up and running, improved bus stop amenities, we've already done, improved pedestrian access, which we are in the works and completed lots of them, and improved bike amenities, which we already have. This is a lot of the stops we've put in, a lot of the things we're trying to get away from. We're trying to get away from bus benches on grass. They don't meet ADA requirements and it's horrible trying to get somebody loaded on and off from those. Those are the solar lights that are going in and some of the stops that actually meet ADA now. As we said, Google Transit is up, it is running, it just doesn't eat the GTF feed the way it's supposed to, but we're working with CDOT because they have a contract to actually update those amenities for us at no charge through a project they're running as long as we can pull that GTF feed to them. And that's what we're trying to work our way through now. Our fleet upgrade schedule and projection, 2018, they got a new bus, 2019 to 2022, it'll be a total of six City Live vans. We've already replaced three. We have three more on the horizon. We're just waiting for the, for CDOT to work their way through some, some piggyback bid options so we can get in there and purchase, we have to purchase. 2022 to 2023, I'm sorry, 2020 to 2023, we're going to purchase a total of three hybrid buses. One is here and two more will be coming. One of our biggest challenges is extended service hours. Our current hours are six AM to six-thirty PM, and our proposed hours will probably be six AM to nine PM. Here's where the money part comes in. The total annual cost will be one point four five million. Now, the capital and vehicle cost on that is about two point nine million, coming in at a total of about four point three. And that is just to extend from six-thirty to nine PM. That meets your, your workforce requirements, that meets your vehicle requirements because as soon as you extend an hour, there's so many hours you have to have maintenance on the back end and so many hours you have to have operators on the front end because you can't go that long and they don't have enough time to come back and drive the next morning with a CDL restriction and a requirement the way it reads. So that's why those numbers are the way they are. Nelson and Nygaard ran their survey and eighty percent of the city that voted voted for a later service because six, six-thirty, it's not there. You can get people to work, you can't get people home. I can tell you that now during the school year, we move children across town more than you would possibly imagine. The number of kids that go from the east side to go to school at South and Centennial is ridiculous. The number of kids who go from South, the south side of town, to go to school at Centennial and East is also astronomical numbers. Those numbers are on an uptick slightly, I think, is what we're talking because we're doing our kids ride, we're doing kids ride free on the full-year basis because we have some grant funds from the county and the city match that we, I've got to run that for the full year, so those numbers are actually sitting up a little bit. Now, this is the additional staff that is part of that, that's part of that money going forward as far as wages and benefits and what it's going to cost of, and operators, custodians, parts technicians, and mechanics. That is what the org chart should look like going forward with the total number of bodies as you add them all. We should go from twenty full-time bus operators to twenty-eight. I will tell you that there is nobody in the continental United States hiring bus drivers because they're not out there. It's, it's, it's pretty rough right now. There was an article this morning in Washington State that they're closing twenty-eight pickup and drop-offs because they can't get school bus drivers. Nobody's applying for those types of jobs right now, so it's a really, really hard niche to fill. This is the capital investment piece that we see going forward, which is your buses, your City Live vehicles, and it brings you up in that two-point-nine-million-dollar range with the city match attached to the federal match for the grants that we would apply for going forward. And that is what I have. Any questions?
Did you have anything to add, Nick?
Uh, well, just since.
Sorry about that.
Just since Ben mentioned it, you kind of, the concept is with the circular that was being discussed. If you look at this, the map in front of you there, that has our current system, all buses currently meet downtown at our transit center. We have one transit center, so every bus meets at the same time, they depart at the same time, and they come back again. And it works, you know, we affectionately call it the pulse system because it works very much like, you know, the pulse in your body does. But as Pueblo continues to grow, it's limited on, we're limited in our capacity to go further and further within the hour timeframe that we have for each of our routes. And additionally, one-hour incremental route isn't very efficient, and it's, it's sort of a mediocre efficiency performance for a transit agency of our size and a urban area of our size. What we do well, extremely well for a urban area of our size and system of our size is our coverage. Ninety-two percent of the city lives within a half a mile of a bus stop, so we have great coverage, but there's this trade-off there that efficiency is sacrificed. And what we want to do going forward is build smart so in a manner that we can continue to have that capacity and continue to serve excellent coverage of the city while building into the efficiency gaps rather than having a one-for-one trade-off. One of the things we're really optimistic about is at the old Kmart, CDOT is purchasing new transportation facility. And that, there's a potential of being able to use that in a joint effort with them as a transfer facility so that you can have a bus that runs direct shuttle from the downtown transit center to there, no stops, but you can connect to any much more local, smaller routes there to get to whatever your terminal destination on the north side is faster than you would right now. On the flip side, what we'd like to see eventually is something on the south side of town. Perhaps somewhere in the vicinity of Prairie and Northern where there is another connection that can have a straight shot, direct shuttle between downtown and between the north side transfer center where when you get to that area, you can reach your shorter, quicker routes to service south side destinations. So that's how we would use the multiple circular model to be able to expand the, or build it our system efficiency without sacrificing the coverage that we currently are able to provide.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Well, you know, I called this meeting because there were, asked for this presentation because I went to an event with the Human Relations Commission, the League of Women Voters, and one of the big questions there was is about this, this bus service that doesn't happen after six o'clock. And we have this huge part of our community, is my understanding, that is reliant or would be reliant on that, that particular timeframe to be able to get to work, to get to, get home. When you're talking about companies being able to, to hire better because people will be able to get to work so they, they have the advantage of, of a whole new workforce because of this. So my concern was is that in 2016, I believe, the Nelson Nygaard study came out, and you yourself said in the report that we had these, these community studies that said that eighty percent of the community wanted extended service, extended service and Sunday service. But here we are in 2021 and we've done nothing. So I don't know why we haven't done anything. I, I assume it was money because everything is money. But we can't, I, I don't think as a city council, you know, our job is to, to listen to the, our constituents and to fill needs and, you know, public transportation is a huge piece of that. And for us to just put our heads in the sand and say, and hope that this goes away that by some miraculous intervention, these people are not going to need extended service or Sunday service is just, is just not, is not cogent. So my question to you would be this, what needs to happen for that to happen? And I saw the dollar amount, and then we'll ask the mayor, well, how come we don't have that in the budget?
So Nick and I have been working this pretty hard and heavy since Nick came on board and since I moved from where I was to this present position. I think there was a lot of vision and not a lot of forethought in the initial way they went forward. A lot of it's money. It's always going to be money, right? And you're always going to deal with the most important thing in front of you first. For us, a lot of times, something came up that was always seemed to be the bigger priority. We worked long and hard to figure out how we were going to get people from the east side that were transit-dependent to a grocery store and home under current restrictions. So we have changed policy, we have changed the rule, we have changed pickup and drop-off requirements so that we can get people to where they needed to be. And I think we, we've come a long way in that process. I think we've made that a lot better to help them get where they need to be. So we've worked our way through that. As far as expansion, expansion is going to be solely dependent on federal dollars and grant application in which to do it, which is number one. We're all about expansion. We can't concentrate on expanding service until we can physically, fiscally show the federal government that we're going to take care of the assets that are required to do that. We don't possess a spot that we can functionally perform that operation from right now. Our downtown transit center is going to be the next thing we outgrow. As we exponentially grow that service. As we exponentially grow that service and grow those hours, you're going to need more parking spots. There's only so many spots in that environment that we're going to have to work within. So for us, our first and foremost is we need to get to something that is bigger, so that we can adequately take care of everything that's required. To make that happen. And from there, you can start to expand your services as you go forward. But it's got to be one after the other. It can't be year lapses in between making a movement to how you're going to get it done.
So you're saying under no circumstances can we expand hours under, in our current facility?
We could with scaling back our coverage, with, with reevaluating the ways and, and the routes that we currently run. And we would have to reduce, um. You know, we have to reduce the number of runs to make them run longer and to fulfill our current obligations with, um. You know, FTA service requirements for our vehicles and the space that we have at the transit headquarters and maintenance facility. Uh, so the, the trade off there is that, um. You know, figuring out where we'd have to, to cut service to, whether it's, and, and there isn't, there isn't many places you can go. That we don't have service that, um, people depend on. Um, you know, you'd, you'd be cutting, you know, from a grocery store here or a medical facility there. Or our neighborhood that has high dependency on transit services somewhere else. That would be the trade officer.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, Councilor Tension?
You're going to be applying for federal grants. What's the timeline on hopefully achieving that?
It's all dependent on when they come and what they're coming for. There haven't been a lot of grant on the federal bus side for transportation for actual expansion purposes. A lot of them are facilities, a lot of them are vehicles, and a lot of them aren't basically wrapped around service. Those are supposed to be on the horizon from what they're talking about, but I haven't seen an actual hard date yet.
Because I, I would think that, that we're dependent on that. We can't do anything until we get that kind of federal funding. Is that dependent on the federal, um, infrastructure bill?
Some of it is, but they haven't said the exact amounts yet. The numbers are still kind of sketchy on where they're going to go and how they're going to do it. There's a large portion earmarked for highway and bridges, and they haven't told the, the, the actual transit piece yet. I haven't seen those. Councilor Flores?
I noticed that you identified our regular buses, which, uh, I don't know how many people they hold, and then you have the city lifts. Uh, is there such a thing as many routes, uh, where you could use a smaller bus? To maybe to, to expand not only the time but the area? Or is that those, uh, those types of city lifts are really not designed for that?
They're specifically designed for paratransit transportation. Those ones are. Could you buy it so it could perform that other form? Yeah, you could. You just have to. The actual amount of space that is on there, it's a six-person capacity with a thousand-pound wheelchair lift right now. So you still have to provide that ADA responsibility, so either way you go, it's going to be a mini route with six people and an ADA lift. So it kind of sort of doesn't.
You're saying the city lift only holds six people?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Yeah, that's not too many, is it? Thank you. The, uh, the grant to move the transportation center, I know we worked on that for the past four years. And how's that going?
The call is the end of next month. And as of, was it Friday? Friday when I heard back from C dot. As of Friday from C dot, I think we're sitting on like four point nine million dollars in match. So they haven't released their total number of what they're going to release, so we have to see where it comes from there. So we're already gathering everything to get it to Michelle, so we can get our stuff ready to rock and roll when it's called.
So the good news is if we get that grant and we get the transportation center moved, then expansion becomes a reality.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Councilor Brown?
I think you covered what I was going to ask, I was wondering. We're going to.
No problem.
That we're going to move the, uh, bus garage, basically. Because we don't, if we get more buses, we don't have room for them now, so we need a new center.
No, not really.
Uh, Councilor Warner?
So you mentioned the Black Hills substation that's behind Summit Brick. So when we're at peak demand, say in the middle of summer, and it's a hundred and some degrees and we're at peak demand. How does that substation help you?
That substation helps us when we go full electric, because then the power draw is going to come straight from across the street instead of several miles down the road.
Okay, so if you're at peak demand, you're at Black Hills, is, the substation is still going to bring you power?
It does, because we only charge at night.
Okay, gotcha.
Great, Mary, you have anything? Or good? Just seems that this should be a big priority for us, and I'm sure that, uh, you guys know it, just like we know it, so. Thank you for coming, thank you for the report. I will go to number three on the agenda, which is the municipal court graffiti program update. Uh, Judge Sykes, Ms. Gofflin, Mr. Purdy. It's great to see you. Thanks for coming.
For you. And I want to thank you for inviting us to come speak to you tonight about our community service program. Um, as I've told a lot of you before, I'm really proud of our community service program, so anytime we have a chance to brag about it, I, I like to do that. Um, Mike Purdy's our full-time community service coordinator, and under his lead, our community service program has. More than tripled the amount of sites that it can, uh, do as far as graffiti removal. And so he's done an outstanding job of organizing everything, getting things running efficiently. Um, so we've been real lucky to have him. I know the question came up about our equipment. Um, so just to give you a little bit of overview, and I know you've heard this probably before, but everyone that comes to the court has an opportunity to work community service. To work off a portion or all of their fines. Um, and in some cases, I do mandatory community service, and that's adults and juveniles, um, with the exception of traffic infractions. Um, and that's, that's the one caveat, but, um, as we move forward, we have our equipment. Um, right now, we have two power washers, we have a soda blaster, a dump trailer, three vans, an excursion and a full-size pickup. Um, which are all used as part of the community service program. And we operate our program within annual budget of about thirty thousand dollars, and we use that budget every year. Um, usually use a full budget to use for maintenance on our vehicles, gas, um, graffiti removal, equipment. Um, and, um, supplies. And then, um, just to give you an idea, these are the different breakdowns. So in two thousand nineteen, defendants worked over nineteen thousand hours of community service to satisfy over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of fines. Two thousand twenty, it was a little bit less because of COVID. Um, this year, we have less people that, um, want to come down and work community service. I don't know if it's because of COVID or something else. Our numbers are down a little bit this year. But this is the benefit not only to the city, because we get all of those hours for our community service program, but it's also a benefit to the city. Um, and so as far as our equipment and that goes right now. Um, we just bought a brand-new, uh, power washer not too long ago, so that we would have two power washers. Our power washer, one is a hot water power washer, is that correct? Um, and so that is what we use to, to remove the majority of the graffiti. Um, we do have a soda blaster, but our soda blaster tends to break down a lot. And we always have to deal with environmental concerns whenever we use a soda blaster, so as long as power washers are up and running. And we can remove it with power washers, they tend to use that instead of the soda blaster. Um, our full-size pickup right now is not operational, um, has some mechanical problems, so it's been out. We did apply for a CDBG grant, and we have been given that money, and so we will be getting a new used truck. It won't be a brand-new one, but we're going to get a new used truck eventually. But, um, the CDBG money runs sort of a year behind. And so we will, won't realize that until toward the end of this year, next year, but we'll get a new one at those. So here's a picture of our, of our, uh, two power washers and our soda blaster. So you guys can kind of have an idea of, of what they look like. Now, I know that there's been some concern about graffitis in the parks. And so one of the problems that we do have with some of this equipment is that when we find out about graffiti, we, we can't always get to it. So, uh, we work in conjunction with the Parks Department, and everybody, doesn't matter, um, HARP. Um, we have all kinds of different agencies that calls us. HARP, we have private, private businesses, Parks and Rec, they all call us. And they, well, they don't call us, they call Mike, and they tell Mike, you know, we have this graffiti, and Mike goes out there and hunts it down and finds it, and then removes it. Um, but a lot of times, because if it's on the trail or something, or if it's down under a bridge, we're not able to always get our power washers down there. Um, but for the majority of the time, uh, we can, and we get them down there and we clean up the graffiti. So this is our graffiti sites by year, and you can see, um, as we get into two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty, the number of sites that we've now been able to clean because Mike's come on board. Um, and so this year, we're, we're on schedule to, to do about the same amount of sites as we have in years past. And those sites include, um, sites from all across the, the city. So it's parks, it's different parts of town. Um, and graffiti is our number one mission in our community service program, um, so that's our first priority. Um, thirty thousand lines of graffiti, but they clean up everything from gang tags to white supremacist tags to vulgar pictures. Um, so anything that you can think of that's been written anywhere, they take care of. And it reaches all parts of town. So as far as staff, we have two full-time employees. We have, um, Ms. Purdy, who's our full-time community service coordinator. We have one, a full-time community service supervisor, and then we have two part-time staff that supervise our community service workers. Um, now, when we were out, uh, for COVID, when we were shut down for COVID. And we didn't have the defendants come and work, um, it was the staff that completed the work. So our staff did a fantastic job of, of keeping up on everything. I think they cleaned the Columbus statue a handful of times. Um, there were some other things, some high priority things that they were asked to do, that they got right on, and they got them done. Um, but they were going out, just the four of them, and cleaning, cleaning up graffiti and stayed efficient, and still were able to clean as not the amount of sites that we just talked about. So we have a real good dedicated staff, and Mike's put together just some pictures. These are some examples of the different graffiti that they go out and clean. If they cannot wash it off with a power washer, then what they do is they paint over it. Um, and typically, we have paint that's donated to us, and so we have standard colors that we will use to paint over. If there is someone in particular, I know they've worked with the, the trash companies for these trash cans and things like that, that they have a particular color. The company will sometimes provide the color of paint and will use their, their paint. Homeowners can also, um, provide the paint, and then they'll do the painting to cover up some of the graffiti. Um, business owners are the same thing. Um, so it really depends on the circumstance. They've been really good at going into these places and cleaning them up. I know there was one place downtown here on Union that we had some problem. Um, getting in there to clean up, but that wasn't necessarily because of our crew or anything like that. It was because we didn't have permission to go on their property. So if it's a private property. Um, we have to get permission to go on their property and paint it. We can't just go on and paint it. And so usually, most people are very responsive, and we can get right on and do it, but that's not always the case. So we had to work through with and, uh, code enforcement to be able to get on that property and finish cleaning that up. And so that's what we did. So. And so these are just some more examples of, of different pictures that they've taken, uh, from all the graffiti. Um, and it can be, it's, it's literally all over the place. That, that took them a long time to clean up, actually. Yeah, um, so, you know, they work really hard, they're in the parks all the time. This is some example of some of the parks. Um, and, you know, Mike's real good about working with the community. When he gets a complaint in, he will talk to people. He goes out on the trails, he'll search for things. Um, so that he can go out there and make sure he creates a priority list of the places that need to be cleaned up first. Um, and so. Um, that's what we do as far as graffiti, but I wanted to remind everybody that we don't do just graffiti. Um, so while we were, had the program was shut down a little bit for COVID, um, SRDA came to us with a need. Um, where they had a lot of volunteers that couldn't deliver food to the seniors, and so Mike and his crew spent some time delivering food. Um, and they spent a lot of hours doing that. They still do that now in conjunction with all the graffiti removal that they're already doing. Um, so they delivered, uh, nearly a hundred tons of food and hot meals. And so, uh, during the summer months, we have, we harvest food from our community garden, we give it to the soup kitchen. Um, we also participate in parades and the trunk or treat, which we're getting ready to do right now. Um, we do our floats and our Halloween stuff and our Christmas float. So this is just some more pictures of our community service crews going out there and being active in the community. And, um, getting all of that, that stuff delivered. This is some pictures of our community garden. Which, but gangbusters, say, we had our apple, apple tree bloom the first time this year. We actually got a ton of apples off our apple tree. Um, so that was very exciting. Um, and, and the kids really love it, and then this is our trunk of treat from last year. Um, and then just examples of our parades, our parade of lights. So that's sort of our, our program in a nutshell. Um, so I'm not sure exactly what council's questions were about the program, but that's, that gives you an idea of what our budget is, what exactly we do, how many sites we clean up. Um, so any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. When we called this, uh, when we called this. Meeting and asked you guys to come, I think the biggest issue was is do you have enough help? Is there more funding that's needed? Is there something that the city can do to make this better? Uh, this is a huge, it's a huge problem in our community, and, and I mean, I, I think that's what we wanted to, to get at. We know you do a great job. We know with the resources that you have, that it's, uh, that. That, uh, you do great work, but, uh, can we do better?
Well, I think that, um, there's always room for improvement. Um, if you wanted to improve it, I think what we would probably need is more full-time staff. Um, and, um, it, you know, a lot of our volunteer works depend, depends on defendants and whether or not they want to come down and do the work. But when they don't, uh, my staff does it. And so, you know, we can always use more employees, uh, if you wanted to approve that, and then we could do, clean up more sites. The equipment that we have, um, we have sufficient staff to work the equipment that we have right now. Just simply buying equipment, I don't think will improve the services per se, um, because we wouldn't have the staff necessarily to get out there and use it. I don't know, uh, one thing that I was thinking about when we were talking about all the trails is I don't know if there's some smaller piece of equipment. Like a power, small power washer that we could hook onto like a four-wheeler. And we could get a four-wheeler and maybe a smaller piece of equipment so that they could get on the trails easier. Um, we could certainly look into something like that. Uh, I don't know, when you were researching the power washer, if you came across anything like that, you may not have even been looking for it.
I wasn't looking for something that small. I was looking for something as a, a replacement for the, the heavy work that we do. Um, one of the things that I came across is you can mount.
Can you speak in the microphone?
You can mount those on smaller, uh, smaller trailers. We need a trailer to mount it on, smaller water supply. And, uh, depending on the size, that's, that's the heavy weight. So the trailer would have to be able to handle the weight of the water more than the machine itself, and then, uh, we'd need something that could pull it, something with power. Um, a four-wheeler is possible, some kind of an ATV, it is possible to do. Um, it would make it easier. Some of the spots on the trail, even with a hundred-foot line, we can't get to them because we can't turn around. When you've got a pickup and even the smaller pressure washer that you saw, it's still the length of that, and the way that trail works, the trail is narrow. So you're, you're at about your max capacity. If somebody's coming down the trail, we have to try and finagle our way off, so they can either walk or ride by on their bicycles. Um, so we need something, it, it would make it easier. There are spots that we could get to that we can't right now. Um, a lot of times, what I'd like to do is just completely remove it. I mean, some of that stuff you saw in there. We're the ones that are out there with the scrub brushes and everything else, scrubbing that stuff and getting it prepped so we can remove it. And it looks a lot better on a trail when you have a clean walkway. And it looks a lot better on a trail when you have a clean walkway as opposed to something with squares, because we paint squares. If you see a square in town, that's us. But better than having patches of paint, which also get kind of slick and they can actually be slick when people are walking on the trail if they're wet. So personally, I would like to remove it, but there are areas we just can't get to.
So we can look into getting a smaller piece of equipment that might be able to get into those areas. Um, and I can research it.
Send you over some numbers. Um, just so you guys know, we do have a fund that is set aside. Um, it's our excess fines fund, um, that is earmarked for, uh, graffiti. It's one of those few accounts that are earmarked for, uh, community service. And I think it police, has to do with police too, police enforcement. I'd have to look at the ordinance again. There is some money in there. Um, but we typically, uh, when I was running boot camp, we tapped that for boot camp and some other things. Um, so we may be able to use that money, but I can get together a presentation or a proposal for you for some more, smaller equipments that we can find, see what the cost is. Um, outside of that, if we got that piece of equipment, that might be good. And then, you know, we can always use more employees. If you want us to do more graffiti, that's really what we'd need to do.
Questions, comments? Uh, Councilwoman Flores?
Uh, as I was preparing last night for our agenda today, I, I looked up some best practices and they brought up two new ways of removing graffiti. One is called dry icing blasting and the other one, which is maybe not feasible for us, but the alternative is wet ice blasting. It's almost like blasting ice cubes, you know, into the graffiti. Do you guys know much about that and what it would take, uh, to have something like that? I guess it's the most effective way of getting rid of graffiti.
I've researched that. Uh, when we, when we got our new pressure washer, I looked into all of those. I actually, Coulson Ice Blast is one of the primary companies. That, that, uh, that sells that kind of equipment. The problem with that stuff is it's not practical. If we've got a whole day's worth of work ahead of us on the trail, you can only carry so much ice that's not going to melt in the summer. You know, otherwise you're just going to have cold water. And cold water doesn't do anything for you. It's, it's got to be the ice that's chipped up and used to blast. Um, that's one of the, um, that's actually why we didn't go that route, because, uh, it's not practical for the kind of work that we do. If you've got, uh, some special areas that, um, say a small, say the, the, the river trail, for example, something like that, it might be more feasible. Because you're doing a smaller area and you're not going to have a whole lot. When we're on the river trail, there's twenty-six miles of trail. And, uh, one of the statistics that, that was in the presentation, you could have a, from the twenty-twenty graffiti, you'd have a two and a half foot wide line that stretches, I can't remember, twenty-some miles. That's the graffiti that we took care of that year. So it's not, it's not feasible for us to do something like that.
Thank you.
When we, when you looked into it before, it's part of the problem that we have with the soda blaster, some of the surfaces that they clean graffiti off of now can get damaged easily, even with a power washer. So you have to be really careful about the material you use. Not that you would think that, um, ice can be abrasive. And so you certainly don't want to wash it off or something like that and then have the words carved in the brick. Uh, so I mean, we, we saw that if you remember when we had, um, mop around town, someone did the wrong cleanup. It wasn't us, but right along the, uh, interstate, uh, over there by Everas, they had cleaned up the upper above their awning, but all they did was power washer, use something that was abrasive and it just carved the words into the brick. Um, so, uh, so we have to be careful about that too.
Councilwoman Schellen?
It seems like your biggest problem as you went from the number of people ruined to work was cut in half.
Well, it has been. It's been building again. So, so we, you know, during COVID, certainly, yes.
It, why is it hard to get people to want to work off their fine?
Um, I'm not sure.
You gotta guess.
Other than that, that's, you know, I mean, so people choose not to work off their fine because they think they're going to be able to pay it. Or they think if they don't pay it, there's no consequence to that. I mean, we send them to collections. Once they go to collections, they don't pay and it just sort of sits out there forever. I mean, I think right now we have close to six million dollars in collections. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but the legislature continues to cut down, uh, options for us to collect that debt. Um, and so even now, we used to be able to put holes on people's licenses. Uh, we'd send in the information in DMV and they'd put a hole on their license until they paid their outstanding fines and costs. And the state legislator took that, state legislator took that away. And so as of January first, that is no longer an option. Um, so everything's going to be going to collections. Um, and so, um, and, uh, right now, people that have traffic infractions, lower level traffic, like speeding five to nine, anything that's twenty or less, things like that, the lower level of traffic infractions. Um, they don't have the option to work off through community service because their fines are lower. So typically they have to pay those on the day that they enter their plea. And that'll be changing as of January one too, because of the new legislation. Um, so everybody will get an opportunity to work off their fines and costs, which it's okay because we get a benefit from that if they're actually gonna, gonna do that. Um, so, you know, we've always had the program available to anybody who wanted to take advantage of it. I have supplied the numbers that actually take advantage of it to, you know, the Colorado Municipal Judges Association and they've passed that along. Um, so, so that's sort of where it is. But you know, when you have people that, um, just think they're not eventually, are ever going to have to pay it. That's sort of where we are.
Problems in the legislature. Thank you.
Councilwoman Colleen Biciccia?
Hi, welcome. Um, thank you for facilitating this program. Uh, your numbers are astonishing. But while I have you, Mike, on the corner of Abriando and Northern, some really bad graffiti popped up over this past week. The old, um, Vic Bean's building, if you're from Pueblo and familiar with that. Um, and it says US Marshal on it, so hopefully we can get that.
And that's on Abriando and where?
In Northern.
That building is actually, that building is actually owned by the Marshal Service and we're not allowed to touch it. Uh, we've known about it and we've had issues there in the past, but they, they won't allow us permission. They won't, they won't give us consent.
Really?
So it's a, it's a company out of Canada that, uh, is managing the property for the Marshal Service until it sells. So we can't do anything with it.
Okay. Well, we, we might be able to get code enforcement. We can bring that and see, court enforcement may have already been trying to enforce that. That's what we had to do with the other owner of the property down on Union. Um, because if we don't get consent to go on, um, then we can't do it. There's a couple of other things you should know, like there's a lot of property owned by CDOT. Um, they don't allow us to touch, um, utility companies, if they graffiti, some of the electrical boxes and things like that, we're not allowed to, to do anything to remove it or to paint over it. Um, and that, that's because of, they have special paint, heat resistant paint, things like that. Um, but typically, um, they're still responsive. Uh, CDOT's been, I think, a little bit better, um, since Mike's come on board because he has a pretty good relationship with them. Um, so we've been working through those. I didn't know anything about the Marshals, but we can talk to code enforcement and see what we can do.
Well, that's good to know. Thanks for the information. That, yeah, it is quite a nice site right now.
We'd love to take care of it. We've tried before and we've been shut down. Um, as far as the, uh, we've actually had some improvement with Black Hills Energy as well. They're now providing us the, uh, the paint. So even the power boxes, there's only one business in town that tends to get tagged that we haven't been able to, uh, work anything out with. All the garbage companies, but one. And, um, even Black Hills is now providing us their paint. So it gives us that much more, um, ability to, um, cover graffiti.
Councilwoman?
So do you think a couple of, um, full-time employees could help you, uh, be more proactive with graffiti removal? Where somebody could take a four-wheeler around all of the trails, um, every other day to spot these things, but so you're not chasing your tail constantly?
Well, the more help we have, the more likely we are to get to things more quickly. We tend to get things done within forty-eight hours of becoming aware of it. And that's, normally it's less than that, but sometimes when we don't have crews, uh, we're out there by ourselves. So you can only do so much, one person, you know, using the machine and everything else. So having more people, especially considering, uh, what's going on right now, with people not coming. Um, it would be quite helpful and it would probably speed up the process. If we're aware of it, we fix it. It's just a question of how quickly we get to.
Yeah, when you're, when you're constantly just, um, uh, responding to complaints, it just doesn't really seem to be as efficient. Um, and then as far as a, a private, a privately owned building, um, can't you find the owners after a certain amount of time? You know, if it's not cleared up in ten days, you can clean it up and then find them and then, um, put those fees on, on taxes. So the, the fines don't go on taxes. So there's, there's a couple of things we do, but that's all through code enforcement. And that's, uh, you have to give them a certain opportunity and you have to follow all the timeframes to allow them an opportunity to, to do it themselves. If they don't, then we can go on the property and we can clean it. They can also be cited for, um, for a violation of that section of the code. And that's ultimately how I saw the owner of the property, um, the property that was on Union. Um, because they came before me on a, on a misdemeanor criminal violation. And, uh, that seemed to spur them along to, to cooperate and get everything cleaned up. Um, but, um, the code enforcement had to work through their whole process. So as long as they're aware of it, at least as far as I'm aware, I think that process works pretty well. It's just not always the quickest. Cause you have to allow them timeframes before you can go on their private property.
Anybody else? Uh, man?
So the response time is about forty-eight hours from the time you get a call, uh, about graffiti?
That's the policy that I've said. It's normally less. We try to get to it even sooner. But forty-eight hours is normally, uh, that, that's a stretch for us to take that long to get there.
Okay. Um, and do you have a program, Mike, where you actually ride the river trails periodically? We all do. How, how often do you do that?
Well, we do that, we do the whole city. So probably every couple of days we get down on the river trail. Um, and when we're out with, uh, if we've got kids, we're out with the kids, a lot of times we will go down there and we'll just patrol the river trail and they have paint.
And just knock out whatever you find.
Just you come across a spot, you fix it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mike, because I'm not sure I know the answer. So, uh, when you do that, how far do you, do you take it all the way from Runyon, Runyon Lake all the way up to the nature center? Or is there a particular stretch of the trails? Cause I know there's also trails that branch off of there.
No, we cover every part of the trail that we can get to in a vehicle. And sometimes when we've got the kids in particular, we'll actually take a walk with them. And we'll end up carrying the paint because it's too heavy for them, but we'll carry the paint. They'll carry the rollers and we know of spots that are almost always tagged. If we're sure to finding work to do, we know the spots that we can go.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Next up is the residential development update. Uh, Mr. Hobson?
Well, thank you, council members, uh, for us, uh, having the opportunity to give you an update on residential development, uh, within the city. And, uh, so we'll go to our first slide. Put my glasses on. This slide, uh, we actually presented this at the retreat this year. And, uh, this is a map that shows the residential areas that have been annexed over the last fifteen to twenty years. But we're not subdivided into lots for development. And it totals a little over forty-three hundred acres. Um, if you just were able to kind of multiply that out into, well, how many housing units, how many residents would this be able to accommodate in the city? It would allow for, at just at a base rate of four units per acre, a little over seventeen thousand residential units. And at our two point four residents per unit, it could accommodate almost around forty thousand residents within the city. Um, in November, November, uh, nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the first subdivision of North Vista Highlands was, uh, the plat was recorded. And that plat included, uh, fifty-one acres and a hundred and sixty-one lots. That hundred and sixty-one lots was more residential lots being platted than what we had seen the previous ten years combined. So that became kind of the first, first inkling that we were going to be seeing some residential lot development created, created within, within the city. Um, as you can see, um, these annexed, but not subdivided areas kind of ring the city, except for the southeast part of the, of, of the city, where the, kind of where the industrial steel mill in that areas. They kind of ring, ring the city. Um, predominantly though, the northwest and northeast areas of the city, um, were the areas that we kind of foresaw that there would likely be, uh, development, uh, occurring maybe in a more rapid pace than there, than the rest of the city. So today, fifteen months later, from June of twenty twenty, we have twenty-five potential residential development projects that are underway in one form or another within the city. Um, these projects include some that, uh, have pl- platted lots and can pull building permits today. Um, others are working through amending their subdivision improvement agreement. And, um, I apologize, I didn't introduce Andrew Hayes, who's going to be here with me tonight. And if there are questions that are more subdivision oriented, then Andrew's going to be here to help answer those questions. I apologize for not introducing you sooner. Um, some of the, uh, projects need to go through a rezoning. Some need to, uh, amend their planned unit development zoning. And some are, uh, going through, uh, subdivision or re-subdivision of the properties. Um, I'm going to go through, but before we, before we go through kind of the list of the different types of development, residential development, uh, projects that are underway. Um, eight of the, uh, of these, uh, projects that are essentially going through some form of entitlement, um, are in the northeast, northwest section of the city. Two of them are on the west side of the city. And then one is in the Belmont area. So where are these developments? Where are they located? What's going on? We have currently two hundred and fourteen acres of planted subdivided lots that are eligible to be able to pull building permits for residential development. And that accommodates approximately one thousand and seventy lots. So, and, and there may be some smaller developments that could add to that, but for the, for the list that we have on the, the eleven platted subdivided lots, comes out to approximately a thousand and seventy lots that today, building permits can be pulled on, residential housing can be established. Um, these include Eagle Ridge Estates, um, two areas within Villabella, uh, the Sawyer Ridge, which is in the northwest side of the city, North Vista Highlands, Regency Crest, Omega Homes, Wesley Hills, which is, uh, west, uh, on the west side, uh, and to the south of Thatcher Avenue. Uh, Crestview Hills, which is in north, northwest, Outlook Ridge Apartments, which is north. And then the Right Place Transitional Apartments, which is the Belmont, uh, area project. We have four projects that are looking at, uh, potentially amending their subdivision improvement agreements. And those are the agreements that are part of the, uh, part two process of subdivision. What you see as council members, uh, is the part one process where you'll see the plat, has the lots established, the roadways, the alleys, the easements for utility lines, uh, park areas that are conveyed, parks and trails. That's what is initially approved, approved through city council. That's what is initially approved approved through city council. And as part of that ordinance that you approve, it establishes a part two, there's a part two process where the design of the roads, the uh estimates of what the costs are for roads, curbs and gutters, sidewalks, stormwater, wastewater improvements, those all are integrated into a subdivision improvements agreement that is then entered into by the Public Works Department. And then following the approval of that agreement, that's when the plat gets recorded. So we have four developments that are in the process, will be needing to amend their subdivision improvement agreements, either uh to uh extend the phasing of of their project, uh and in some cases potentially uh looking at changing the agreement uh based on modifications in the city's uh development standards. Several of these uh subdivisions, uh these SIA agreements have been in place for ten to fifteen years. There hasn't been any development. So in order to accommodate, looking at how do you actually get these developments kickstarted, we're looking at uh amending the SIAs to be able to unnecessarily reduce city standards, but accommodate uh a more economical way to be able to have these developments uh actually uh begin. There are projects that are unplatted uh that would need to be subdivided or in or in different uh states of of land use entitlement, either rezoning, uh subdivision, and that accommodates about fifteen hundred, accounts for fifteen hundred and fifteen acres, approximately five thousand six hundred and fifty four lots. And uh that includes seven or eight of these twenty five projects. And some of these to highlight, um Villabella, uh number sixteen. We currently have a subdivision uh that we are processing that contains three hundred and seventy three new lots uh that would be developed. And this is up by the university. This is the and overall Villabella as a as a development would have up to about two thousand six hundred and twenty lots. But this subdivision would accommodate three hundred and seventy three lots. And we currently are in the process of reviewing, and that should be coming to city council in the next two to three months. Uh North Vista Highlands uh has a hundred and ten acres, approximately five hundred lots. They're in the process of, they just amended their PUD, which council approved in the last month. And they now are in the subdivision process. Pike's Peak Park is a ninety acre area just along West Twenty Fourth. And uh essentially, if you were to extend Spalding from uh Park West area connected to Twenty Fourth Street, it would intersect this development. This is a development that's being undertaken by Neighbor Works of Southern Colorado. And approximately ninety acres and six hundred and four units. They're in the process of rezoning and subdividing this property. And then Pastoral Ranch, uh which was previously annexed into the city, they're looking at a subdivision that would include about four hundred and ninety five lots. While this list is showing an increase in uh securing development entitlements, it has not actually, at this point, resulted in a huge number of building permits in the city. Now, our building permits are likely in twenty twenty one to double what we did in twenty twenty. So we could have maybe up to three hundred residential uh units uh with building permits this year. And so that's it's improving, but when you look at all the different, all this activity, it hasn't quite got to the point of where we're actually seeing requests for building permits in these subdivisions. And we are preparing for that to likely occur, uh to have a lot more applications for building permits. But today, it's an increase, but it's not uh it's not a huge, huge amount. Another thing with residential development that is new and different that we've really seen occur in the last two to three years is the formation of metropolitan districts to be able to uh provide the basis for long term funding for infrastructure, for roads, utilities, and that type of thing for development. Um metro districts have the ability to bond, uh sell bonds, and then over a twenty five to thirty year period repay those bonds. Uh what we had seen up to about five years ago was that most of the uh infrastructure was being financed through conventional loans that had repayments of in the timeframe of three to five years. So it made it really difficult for developers to be able to pay back the cost of the infrastructure for roads and utilities. And so we've really seen a increase in the formation and adjustment of metropolitan districts. Um Pastoral Ranch just had a service plan approved for three districts within that hundred and ten acre area. Thunder Village did a reconfiguration of boundaries based on the sale of about five hundred and sixty acres of the Thunder Village area. Um and then that five hundred and sixty acres uh was on a new service plan was approved, and that's that's now listed as a Villabella Metro District. And that was approved by council recently. Pike's Peak Park, which is the Neighbor Works project, uh has had a service plan approved by council. And we anticipate there likely will be a new application for a service plan for some of the Sawyer Ridge property that's undeveloped. So that's something that's different uh that we have just really seen recently. I think the Thunder Village was the only real metropolitan district we had formed in the last ten years. And then suddenly we've had uh multiple metro districts uh service plans coming before council. And it's really to fund the infrastructure uh to be able to, over a longer period of time, pay back the cost for that. Uh we have had inquiries for annexations and actually have some active petitions for annexations that you will be seeing uh in the next uh next couple of months. The Wild Horse Annexation Area, let me see if I can go back to the Wild Horse Annexation is uh just to the north of US Highway Fifty West and Pueblo Boulevard. And it's a hundred and seventy nine acre. This is a uh combination of uh commercial and some residential development uh that uh would be uh developed in this area. We have an active uh petition that we're working on the annexation agreement. And so we're hoping to be able to have that come before council before the end of the year. The other active petition is the Pueblo Springs Apartments. That's located at West Thirty First Street and on the east side of Pueblo Boulevard. That's an eighteen acre area set up for uh apartments. They anticipate the first phase, there'd be two phases of this development. And the first phase would have approximately a hundred and twenty apartment units, market rate of market rate units. We have uh four other potential annexations, WL, which is uh in the same general location as the Wild Horse Annexation, although it extends to the uh to the north, clear to Dillon Drive. So it's a fairly sizable annexation, it's a combination of some residential that would be an expansion of the uh residential de- development on the northwest side of town, kind of up against where the railroad uh runs along the northern edge of the city. And then primarily, there'll be a lot of industrial uh business park type of of areas of this. But it will contain some residential development. Uh there's a potential for resurrecting the Stone Ridge uh annexation, which is west uh along Red Creek Springs Road. It's about a five hundred and seventy acre area. And then uh there's uh four phases of uh property owned by the Oshie Otto family that is immediately adjacent to Stone Ridge. That also uh could be, is likely to be submitted for annexation. And then the last one is the Pastoral Ranch is looking at an expansion of another hundred and thirty acres, which would bring that development to about two hundred and forty acres. We've also had other inquiries. It's kind of interesting. We really did not have a lot of inquiries over the past eight to nine years. And in the last uh eighteen months, we've had potential for uh annexation of the Russell Trust Property, which is uh on the north side of Highway Fifty and immediately west of the railroad. So kind of between the Wild Horse and WL annexation just to the north of Highway Fifty. Liberty Heights is uh an area that is uh adjacent to El Camino, kind of the west of the of the cemetery along Northern Avenue. Uh we've had inquiry on the Robert Jackson Ranch, which is uh to the uh south of the landfill property along Highway Seventy Eight. It's a substantial two thousand six hundred and fifty acre area. And then uh the properties that are uh kind of adjacent to the Neighbor Works uh development on the west side of uh Pueblo Boulevard and north of Twenty Fourth Street. There's a little bit of that property that has not been annexed into the city, uh that there's uh interest in annexing that. And then the final one is the property that is kind of set for the county jail property. And that is uh to the west of Pueblo Boulevard uh along Twenty Fourth Street, Joe Martinez Extension Area. And that includes seventy acres. Part of that would be for the county jail and the area immediately to the west of Pueblo Boulevard would be uh more for commercial development. That one really isn't isn't housing related, but those are um the main projects that uh that we've been inquiries that we've been able to receive through the planning department. One, so what's driving a lot of this? And some of it is just the need for housing within Pueblo. But one of the things that we found through the uh regional comprehensive plan that we've been working on in conjunction with the county and uh PACOG members, is that Pueblo really has the water to be able to expand uh development and housing in particular. And in two thousand sixteen, city council and the Board of Waterworks redid the extraterritorial water agreement. This is very, very critical for the city because we expanded the boundary for what we call Service Area A. And this is the area where if extraterritorial wa- water is requested through the Board of Waterworks, city council has the authority to condition and and add requirements at your sole discretion, for the most part, for any kind of development. So it really puts the city in a controlling position for any uh development outside of existing city limits. If property has the ability to be, to meet the state requirements to be annexed in the city, we can require annexation prior to any water service uh of being developed on those properties. But if it's not eligible, council still has the ability to condition the uh ability for extraterritorial water service to be granted through the Board of Waterworks. And this is a really, really critical part. It's it's something that the city has, is in a very strong position to be able to control how water is distributed and under what conditions water can be provided um through Pueblo Water. So what's our development review focus and what have we been really working on? What we want to do is administer land use applications in a timely and consistent manner. We want to focus on redevelopment and development by extend expanding citywide housing opportunities that provide a variety of housing options. Uh we're looking at affordable housing, market rate housing, as well as areas that can be developed at a higher scale. We've identified over the over the years that there's been people that are in professional positions uh that work within Pueblo, but choose to live outside of Pueblo because we really haven't had as many hu- housing opportunities for the higher, the people that are bringing in a little bit higher income. We want to focus on the redevelopment of downtown, the existing neighborhoods and infield developments within the city. And we also are working on implementing the Open Gov Electronic Program for applications uh to see the status and approval of their development. So applicants would be able to log on, see where their where their uh application is as far as the process for review from all the different departments and have a more transparent experience as far as development re- review by the city. So we also are focusing on coordination for residential development. And one of the things, we've done three things over the last twenty four months. First is uh there's been the organization through uh Councilman Aleth and Councilman Atencio of the Community Development Committee. This committee is made up of residential developers, engineers, surveyors. It meets for the most part on a monthly basis, and their role is to address development issues. What's going on that is hindering the approvals or issues that are causing conflict in the review of development projects? And this committee's been very successful. It's uh it's taken a while. I think there's been some frustration over how long it takes to get things done. But it is a committee that looks at uh roadway classifications. Um it looks at uh issues for uh stormwater requirements. If we're having an issue in some form of uh development, it's gonna come to this committee. And there, we're gonna work with the developers and bring out what the issue is and what we can do about it. And then inform city council of kind of what we would like to see to to be able to relieve some of these problems. The second thing that we've uh expanded is the subdivision review and commercial development pre-submital meeting program. And what we do is we have about eighteen different agencies that are involved. Every Wednesday, we rotate between uh subdivision, so zoning, subdivision, plating, vacations, those types of things. We have those one meeting and then the op- the next Wednesday, we have a commercial development meeting. So the those are for commercial reviews of uh business development uh in the city. We do these as pre-submital meetings with the developers and uh city departments. We have all the utility companies involved and transportation representatives. And we meet, for the most part, it's been uh through Zoom meetings, but we are starting to meet more in person. These meetings are critical to be able to uh inform the development community of what to expect and what we're what we would have as issues for the development of their property. And we feel like we've um changed the culture of these meetings in the last twenty four months to where we're not just gonna be telling them what the regulations are and why they can't do something. What we want to do is be able to work with them to say, this is how you could be able to try to come to where you could accomplish what you what you'd like to to do. And if you can't make it that far, if you can't get there with that with uh with because of not really being able to comply with uh regulations, that we're not gonna have the ability to really adjust, we work with them to be able to say, well, how can we get you to to a point where uh your development is not gonna just stop? And then the third area that we've been working on is public means business. We're working with Pueblo County Regional Building uh on the development of a permit center that will be located in the Wells Fargo Building. And we are looking at having some staffing there uh at that one stop shop for for permits. And we see that as something that would aid in the ability to be able to have more efficient uh permit issuing throughout the city. So that ends my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Questions, comments, uh counsel for us?
You indicated that uh we have a lot of developers that are developing large
we have a lot of developers that are developing large swathes acres of land, but we're not seeing the commensurate building of houses at the pace that we look at these developments. What are they telling you that they know that we don't know? I mean, are they telling you why there's such a such a vacuum there between all of the acreage that they're developing, but we're not seeing that in the building permitting area?
I think from the first map that I showed with the forty-three hundred acres, a lot of these properties are being sold and changing hands, and they're being purchased by larger residential developers, home builders from outside of Pueblo. And in order to be able to get those properties to the point where they can pull building permits, they are having to, for the most part, either subdivide because these are areas that have never been subdivided or tweaking their subdivision improvement agreements if they have been already plotted. And so the timing to get those properties entitled and ready, that's going to take some time. But these are typically have been home developers from outside of Pueblo that have pretty good track records on doing high-volume residential development. And it's a matter of just getting them to getting to a point where they are entitled to be able to pull building permits.
And my last question had to do with we've made some tweaks here and there in our zoning, especially to accommodate maybe more residential downtown. Can you identify a few of those for us tonight? That would make it easier for us to develop areas downtown that developers would want to build?
I think it was about twenty-four months ago, council adopted an ordinance that established the mixed-use zoning in the Central Business District downtown where apartment units or residential units in buildings that are, those units are either second floor or above on those buildings or behind the street front. Those are used by right now, and we don't have to go through any kind of special use permit or other entitlements in order to have those be developed. The street front areas are still retained for commercial, but any of the floors above above street level or any of the areas behind can be developed by as used as by right. The other thing that we did was we council adopted a revision to the landscaping code in what we call the established development area of the city. And that area was essentially the city limits boundaries as of nineteen thirty and going into the depression. Most of the development really stopped in Pueblo during the depression and then World War Two. And then after World War Two, there was a major influx in development within the city. It was more, it's kind of where our first tier of kind of outside of downtown development occurred. But it was at a totally different design approach from a subdivision standpoint. That's where the curvilinear streets were introduced. And the grid pattern of development, which was predominant through the city up until nineteen thirty, you didn't really see hardly any of that after that. Well, the downtown area has the grid pattern. And so through the change in the landscape code, we can have the reestablishment of the tree lawn areas and have not necessarily use landscape architects to do those designs because you're just reestablishing these tree lawn areas. And we've had some modification of the buffers in a redevelopment project so that there isn't quite as much requirement of buffers in a downtown area that would limit the ability to have redevelopment in downtown. And then the third thing that we've done is we've done some modifications to the parking standards within the established development area to be able to allow for expansion of buildings without triggering additional parking. And so those were the three main things that we the councils approved.
Anybody else, Counsel?
So to make this easier for the public, can you tell me, I think I wrote down one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten developments that are a possibility? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so Thunder Village is looking for how many homes? Or you can just go in order. I just kind of took notes, so.
So Thunder Village, actually the Villa Bella, which acquired five hundred and sixty acres. They have the ability through their planned unit development to build two thousand six hundred and twenty overall units. Today, they are subdividing lots of creating three hundred and seventy-three lots.
Okay, so they're moving dirt?
They are. They are. They are not moving dirt yet. They are getting a subdivision approved that would establish, create the lots that then they would be able to.
Okay, but the person that owns it is 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 doing this. Whereas when you mentioned before, you have people that are just trying to get the land annexed and able to subdivide before they sell it.
That's correct.
Okay, so Pascal is just, how many, how many homes there?
They currently have a hundred and ten acres annexed, but they really, they never followed through completely with the subdivision of that. So they would have to submit a subdivision and based on they actually filed subdivision, went through part one through City Council, but never fully completed the part two. So the plat was never recorded. So they're going to have to restart.
Are they looking to sell or is the current owner going to build?
The current owner will probably build some of those.
Okay. Okay. And then you can go in order for me. I'm just, I just, again, I didn't write these down in order. So Vista Highlands, what have you got next that makes it easy for folks to hear?
They have a hundred and ten acres that.
And this is which one, sorry?
North Vista Highlands.
North Vista Highlands.
Which would have about five hundred lots. North Vista Highlands is a planned unit development area of over a thousand acres. So the entire property has the ability authorizing the P U D for four thousand eight hundred and fifty residential units. Currently, they're looking at about a hundred and ten acres, which should accommodate five hundred lots.
Okay. And are they looking to sell or the current owner is going to develop?
The current owner would not be the developer. They would be looking at selling.
Okay, so they're looking to sell. Let's see, Wild Horse?
Wild Horse would likely so they would, they would go through and get the entitlements to the zoning and the subdivision, but they would likely not be the.
So they're, they're going to sell to a developer?
Right.
Okay. And then what about the Springs, Public Springs Apartments?
That will be developed by the by the owner.
Okay, so we have two out of the ten that are going to probably be moving dirt soon. Correct?
I would think, I would think so. It depends on how quickly. We anticipate that we are going to be getting either rezonings and subdivisions that would be processed, although those are not, most of these would not be approved until sometime if we receive, if we receive a subdivision application, let's say in November, it would be approved in March or April.
Okay, but then they're going to sell it?
Some of them will sell.
Okay, so Pike's Peak is not going to sell, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have three that are going to, that'll be more than likely coming soon.
Yes.
Or sooner. Okay. So that's Pike's Peak, Public Springs, and Villa Bella. And the rest are just requesting annexation and subdivision, and then they'll sell to a developer?
That's correct.
If the developer buys it.
And what about Richmond and Crestview and those places? They're all moving.
Right. Richmond has purchased several of the lots in North Vista Highlands that were, that have been approved in subdivision. And so they are looking at pulling building permits shortly.
Now, that development's been there for a while, right? They just started building again. The one that you just mentioned?
If you look at your list, at the very first of the list, those are all builders that are building, are ready to build, correct?
So Richmond is Villa Bella. Correct?
Can you put up that list, too?
Richmond is involved with some in Villa Bella and also in Crestview Hills.
And what, and which hills?
Crestview Hills. So that's number nine on the current residential development list.
Keep going.
So tell me which ones, tell me, tell me which properties are owner
There's the West.
that are currently owned and the owner will be building rather than we, you know, getting that annexation, et cetera, and looking to sell.
So currently, on the, on the list of platted lots, Eagle Ridge Estates, thirty acres, Premier Homes is is developing those, building those. Villa Bella, there are twenty acres that has been subdivided. Lots, lots created. Richmond Homes is building homes there. And then there are twenty-five acres within Villa Bella that St. Aubin Homes will be, but there's a hundred and twenty-five lots that are currently platted that they are going to be pulling building permits. So so Eagle Ridge Estates, both of the Villa Bella properties. North Vista Highlands, their forty acres has been sold to a developer or to a builder. They will be building those. Regency Crest, Omega Homes has actively built out that entire they're on their fourteenth phase. Wesley Hills is, they typically have a little bit more custom type homes, and so they have a variety of different builders that build there. And then Crestview Hills, number nine, either Richmond or Premier Homes have purchased those lots.
Okay.
And then Outlook Ridge is actually under construction, a hundred and twenty apartment units, and then the right place is under construction. So those eleven on the first page are platted and are
Okay, good, good.
actively. The others are more, I guess you would say, more speculative, although we have had more inquiries, more applications in the past fifteen months.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Counsel Brown.
What's the, do you think, what is the biggest contributor to people moving here? Is it the our climate, the cost of these houses, jobs, or is it a combination everything?
Counsel, I think it is a combination, but surprisingly, the are, the houses that would be sold here are going to be less expensive than if you're, if you're up north in Colorado Springs or the Denver metro area. And really, what I think is driven the market here is that land in Pueblo comparative to land in as you go north is way less expensive. And so by creating these metro districts to extend the financing for the infrastructure and buying the land, it's amazing the number of inquiries we have from developers outside the Pueblo area that are coming in and just buying, have options to buy land for residential development. It's just, I haven't seen this in twenty years.
All right, great. Thank you, guys, for the update. Move on to the vacant property registry ordinance review, Mayor and Mr. Haber?
Yes, Mr. Termon, members of the council. Let me just do the introduction here, and then I think mostly council wanted to have a discussion among themselves with respect to this ordinance, but we call this ordinance was passed by the City Council on May the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. A recollection is it was unanimous at that time. I signed the ordinance into law on the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty-one. And as you know, over the summer, after enacting the ordinance, we began compiling lists. And this ordinance basically requires individuals who don't occupy a property for ninety days in a row or for a hundred and eighty days in a twelve-month period of time to register that property as vacant property. Now, they can keep it vacant, but they have to register it and pay a five hundred dollar registration fee. This ordinance doesn't require them to sell their property or to lease their property. They could keep it vacant in perpetuity if they want to, as long as they register it and pay the five hundred dollars a year. So we began compiling the list from Black Hills Energy, the Board of Waterworks, Code Enforcement, the Postal Service, that we, so we could send letters out. I actually wanted the letters to go out in August. They didn't get out until September. I wanted all these property owners to have plenty of notice that this change had taken place, that they were going to be required to, number one, either get their property occupied or start rehabbing it, or get it registered and pay the five hundred dollar fee. So we wanted to get plenty of notice. In September of twenty twenty-one, two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine letters were sent out. I've seen stuff on social media. It was four thousand or six thousand, but it was two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine letters went out. Code Enforcement got fifteen hundred calls, letters and emails in response to those letters. As a result of the calls, they had fourteen hundred and eighty properties were removed from the list because they investigated, determined the property was not vacant. Of all the letters that went out, six appeals have been filed with the mayor's office. And four of those have been set for hearing, two of whom I actually dismissed saying, no, this isn't, this isn't vacant within the meaning of this ordinance. So those appeals were dismissed, and we said that it's not vacant property, didn't need to register. Four have been set for a hearing. Four cases have been set for hearing. And six properties have already signed up, paid the registration fee. So I think the ordinance is working like we wanted it to. You know, and you all got a copy of the housing report that the city and county did together. That report reflects that in the next ten years, we're going to be ten thousand housing units short in this community. So that's part of the reason why this vacant property ordinance was enacted, was to get these vacant properties back into productive use, make them available. If the owner of the property didn't want to develop them, rent them out, sell them, you know, sell it to somebody who will so that they can be put back into productive use, so that the neighbors wouldn't be complaining about things. So it's to put these properties back into productive use. The registration requirement is important because if the house is vacant, we need to know who to contact, who's responsible for that property. If it's owned by somebody from out of town, who's the local person who's in charge so that there's an issue or a problem with that? So, and this is separate and distinct from the the ordinances that require you keep your property up to a certain standard. That's completely different than this ordinance. Clearly, if an owner, even if it's occupied, does not keep a property up to standard by cutting weeds and those kind of things, the city can enforce can assert leniency against that property after they go in and cut the weeds. This is totally different from that. And that ordinance has been on the books for a long time, but it doesn't address the problem that we have with this vacant property and these properties being kept out of productive use and just being vacant in the neighborhoods. So some of these are very nice properties, but they're vacant under the definition of those terms, and that's why they're required to register. So as I said, this ordinance does not require anybody to rent their property or to sell their property. They can keep it vacant for as long as they want to. They simply have to register it and pay the five hundred dollar annual fee. And I would suggest to you that if a family, and we've had situations come into the mayor's office, and I think they're yet to be determined where a family home, mom's in the nursing home, nobody's living in the home, but the family wants to keep it so that they can come when they come to town, they can stay in the home, you know. two or three weeks at a time, those kind of things. That's perfectly acceptable use, but that home meets the definition of vacant property. And if you want to do that, you simply have to register it, pay that five hundred dollar fee. So that's where we're at at this point with respect to the ordinance. We set up in the mayor's office and with municipal court, a process for the appeals to take place to work through the system, to make sure that everybody has a right to have a hearing who challenges the determination made by code enforcement that this is a vacant property. We'll go through that process. And I know there was somebody came to a council meeting, complained that this eighty-eight-year-old lady got summoned into court. Well, she didn't get summoned into court, she got, she filed an appeal and was told this is when your court hearing is going to be. So that's how she got noticed that she needed to appear in court.
Kyle, you have anything?
No, I think that's a pretty good summary of where we're at. We are, I, I think we are ahead of the process here. I think what we're seeing on social media, council's hearing from constituents is it was a bit of a shock to the system, right? It's a new law. People are just now learning about it. They, you know, not everyone follows the changes to the code, so that, I think that makes sense. But we had to reach out. We had to get moving on this quickly, and that's what code enforcement did. That's what they were asked to do. They went out, they found people that didn't have water hookups, and they said, we're going to send them letters. Why? Because if you don't have a water hookup, it's not a habitable home. You can't live in that home. So, well, I say hookup, say they don't have any water use. So that's where those numbers came from. We've now, we're working with the people that got those letters to confirm that those houses are in fact not vacant. I think this is going to take some time to settle out, but we aren't going to be able, I mean frankly, we just, we can't send code enforcement out to check all forty-seven or forty-four thousand households in the city to see if they're vacant or not. So we had to find ways to get this done quickly. The mayor did bring up, you know, there are options for people that own these homes. You can sell it, you can rent it. One option that came up in our hearing, we did have an appeal hearing last week. The option that came up was, it was neighboring properties that were both owned by the same person, maybe a lot rearrangement is a better idea for them. So it becomes one lot rather than two separate lots. So we're willing to work with these people, we're willing to help them, but if they want to have a home that is not being put to use, they're going to have to register it and pay the registration fee. So I think, you know, I've looked over the ordinance front to back and you know, if the council wants to make changes, that's absolutely fine, but we need to have a legally cognizable definition of what a vacant home is. It needs to be something that'll pass constitutional muster. So, you know, we, we can't say, oh, this one's okay, this one isn't. We have to really have an actual legal standard. So if we need a clarification on that, we're happy to do it, but we just wanted to see what, what council thinks.
Questions, comments, Councilor Winner?
So I think where the problem comes here is that the ordinance clearly reads that any condition that on its own would lead a reasonable person to believe that a property is vacant. And then it goes through a whole list of what leads that person to, to believe that that property is vacant. And we're, we're talking about nuisance properties where you know, I guess I really don't need to get into that. I think the problem on this ordinance is number eleven, where you're talking about three months. You know, currently with abandoned properties, and I think that's what we really had in mind here, was abandoned properties, and to use it as another tool to kind of nudge these owners to do something. However, we had the ordinances in place already to get really tough on these, on these nuisance abandoned properties. We could legally fine them a thousand dollars per violation if we wanted to, even jail time, which we weren't doing at all. So I, I think this is unnecessary. I explained that before several times to several people since twenty sixteen, when they were trying to bring this, this ordinance to light. It was very popular in the United States, I think like in twenty-ten, and most cities dropped it because it was just too, too, too onerous and too labor intensive to kind of keep up on it. But I think the problem here is number eleven. Otherwise, you're just looking at really the same kind of ordinances that we already have, and we just need to get tougher on those. When you're sending out, what, twenty-five, ninety-nine, two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine letters, isn't that like seven percent of our residences? I mean, that's kind of a high number.
I don't know what percentage it is, but that's what you have to do when you start a program like this.
Yeah, but there's, there's homes out there that don't get mail. People get all their mail at the businesses. I mean, it was just handled poorly, really.
Well, and if they, if they live in the home, and that's where they get, they don't get mail there, but they're living there, they're taken off the list. No problem. They don't have to register. They'll know that in sixty days.
And mail doesn't just go to the house that is believed to be vacant. It goes to the address that the registered owner has with the county tax assessor. So if it's owned by someone, say out of state, or doesn't live in the city, their address is with the county and we, and we use that information.
But you still need to be, if you want to solve this problem, you need to get serious with your, with your ordinances. I think I sent Daryl a perfect example of a home. Daryl, did, did you get that? And none of this would, we'd probably get nowhere with this home, even on, on this vacant property registry. Beulah and Saint Clair. So I guess I can explain this. This home has been vacant forever. It's been abandoned forever. We have one gentleman in town that pays the taxes every year on several, several homes. No, not that one. That's that's a nice house. That's, I own that place. Okay, well, I'll just give you an example. So this home has been vacant like since before two thousand and four, right? And there's a gentleman in town that pays the taxes on a lot of these abandoned properties. And even though the city is abating these every single year with, with weed abatements, he's just paying those and letting it ride, because if he, if he files for a deed, then he's responsible for that property. If people get in there and he doesn't want any lawsuits. So he's just kind of, I guess, waiting out until he can file, file for a deed and then, and then own the property. But, but that's an issue right there, that even this is not going to go anywhere with. And that's, that's, that's a nuisance problem property.
Yeah, this won't take care of that issue.
Want to take that. Another, another issue, another issue is a condominium complex. It's been vacant for years and years. It's on Eighteenth and Green Grand, Eighteenth and Grand. And since, I mean, that, that property's been nothing but a nuisance. We've had homeless people in and out of there. We've had drug dealers in and out of there. But it's not considered a vacant property because the owners allow one person to live in one unit. And that's, that's not, that's not getting on here either. So this, it's not addressing the real problems. I mean, Douglas Bruce is not going to abide by any of this. So I think, I think that the, the main intention, like I said here, it reads that any, any condition that the home is in on its own, that would lead a reasonable person to believe a property is vacant. That means a, an abandoned nuisance property. It doesn't mean, you know, somebody went to you for four months and they hired a lawn service, and now you're going to send them a vacant property registry form because nobody lives there for four months. It, it, it's just, I think, I, I say get rid of eleven, if you want to keep it, or just get rid of it completely.
Yeah, I, I think it's a bad idea to get rid of eleven. That's, tells you what, what the timeframes are. Fifty days in a row or a hundred and eighty days in a year.
And, and to, to your point about the house on Beulah, it's the treasurer's deed process. Someone who doesn't own the property, they pay the taxes, and after a certain amount of time, they go through the process and they can get deed to the property. The way this works is it works the same way as our other abatement liens. As you said, the city goes out there every year, we clean it up, and then we
It's, it's just the same stuff over and over, whereas you could be fining this person a thousand dollars per violation. That's going to do something. Those liens we can foreclose on and, and reestablish the property.
Well, and we can't, if we don't know, if we don't have an owner, someone's paying the taxes, we can't find that person.
This dude's not going to pay five thousand dollars in taxes. He'll pay five hundred, but he's not going to, not going to pay that.
This will do, this, this will be, if it's not registered and it's supposed to be, and then when it applies to the notice of violation, a lien will be issued and it will be foreclosed upon, just like our other abatement liens. So what we're doing is, in addition to the work that the city's already doing to clean up the property, there'll be another thousand dollar lien that'll go into the property taxes. So this individual who's paying the property taxes will also have to pay that extra thousand dollars. So it's not going to necessarily solve the problem, but it is adding more cost to this vacant, this abandoned property. And as to the, the number eleven specifically, as I said, I, I don't think that there's, if we want to change the way it works, that's fine, but having these solid timelines is really useful when we get into appeals and we get into court and stuff like that.
You know, like I said, if you have an abandoned property that's a nuisance property, the, the, the mayor can, can declare it a nuisance property. The, the fire chief can declare it a nuisance property, and it has to be taken care of within twenty-four hours. You can throw this owner in jail. That's going to take care of it. We have that in our, in our ordinances.
Okay, that, you know, nobody's going to do that. People are entitled to due process. This process here is a process that lets everybody have their day in court and they can say it's abandoned.
Denver's, Denver's done that. Several cities have thrown people in jail over, over horrible nuisances.
Well, and again, the issue still, I mean, it does come back. I don't know, I don't know about this property specifically, but if there is no owner, say the owner died and has no heir or issue to inherit the house, we can't, we can't criminally prosecute anyone. There's just no one for us to go after in that situation. This would address that situation. Again, it doesn't end up with a criminal penalty, but it does, it puts that lien on the house. And that lien gets added to property taxes. Now, the city could go a different route and foreclose on that lien. But then now the city owns the property and we have to figure out what to do with it. The other way, if it goes to the county, then the county has that ability to foreclose on the property as well, or to dispose the property through a treasurer's deed. So I, I, there are certain of these situations where there are people that are owners that we can find and we can cite criminally. But when there's not, we still at least have this.
I guess my point is, I guess my point is, is that we know where the abandoned properties are. So I don't know why we're not addressing those directly. Instead, we have to do this whole convoluted onerous thing that we had to hire another person to, to, to take care of it and, and mail out letters, which costs a lot of money, when we, when we know where these abandoned properties are, that we could be taking, you know, if we, if we weren't currently enforcing the ordinances that we had prior to this, why are we adding more?
Well, and how do you define an abandoned property?
It's all right here in your, in your
It's vacant, it's vacant.
It says right here, any condition that, that on its own would lead a reasonable person to believe the property is vacant. So sitting behind, sitting behind your desk, sitting behind your desk and taking data from the post office and, and wherever else they were taking data from, it's, it's not, it's not identifying the abandoned nuisance property.
Well, it's a start because we've never had this system before. So that's where you start with the vacant properties. This is not an abandoned property statute, it's a vacant property statute. Councilor Manilow was one of the big proponents of this. I don't know whether you've changed your mind, counselor, but I think it's a good thing to keep this in place and to move forward with it. It will get some of these properties moving. That's what the intent of this ordinance was, to get some of them taken care of. It'll probably pick up some of those abandoned properties that you're concerned about.
And I guess just to the point of the existing ordinances, I mean, we do have existing ordinances. As I said, there's, the vast census said there's forty-four thousand homes. I don't know how many businesses in the city. We have eight code enforcement officers. And that's just, the, the, last, last I heard from Karen Wilson, they were getting between a hundred and two hundred calls a day. So, I mean, we can, we can hire twenty new code enforcement officers and hit them on the streets, or we can hire one person and send out some letters. It's a matter of resources and frankly, hiring twenty anything right now wouldn't be possible. So I agree, if, if, if we had unlimited resources to go out there and enforce our code, we probably could get this addressed, you know, rather quickly, but we just don't have those resources right now. So it, it's, it's, it's a balancing act.
Councilor Tencio?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Councilor Winner in that a, a lot of people are, have properties that are being maintained. They may be empty, they may be vacant, but for X amount of months or whatever, but they're be, they have to pay a five hundred dollar fine, basically, not a registry, it's a fine, for having it vacant. Those people shouldn't be considered in this. Like we said, the intent was to get abandoned, boarded up, houses and buildings that are a nuisance back onto the, onto the rolls, not like somebody going to Europe for four months and, and having to pay five hundred dollars of, you know. I mean, there's plenty of people around town that go all over the country, all over the world, and leave their homes for long periods of time. Snowbirds and people like that are going. I, I, I think we have to make a distinction between those people that are main, have a house or property that is being maintained, but it may be empty as opposed to a, a, a piece of property that's not being maintained, boarded up and totally messed up. And those are the problem properties that we want to deal with, not somebody who leaves the house or a building vacant for X amount of, what have gone. There's, there's a, a lady came to me on a business on the east side. Covid hit her so bad that she's not able to go in and do her business, except once in a while, when she gets an, gets a order. She got a letter. You know, what is she going to do? Good, you know, because Covid hit her so bad, she's not able to do her business like she used to be prior to Covid. She's only goes in every other two or three weeks, or every week, or whatever she gets an order. She, she, she got a letter. That's not right. It's just not right. We shouldn't inconvenience people that don't need to be inconvenienced like this. Then they shouldn't have to pay a, a five hundred dollar fine, just to, you know. It, it, it should be an abandoned nuisance property, not just a vacant property. Is every building and storefront on downtown on Main and, and everybody's, are they getting letters? Probably not, because they're millionaires and they don't, they don't get letters.
Uh, Councilor Schilling?
Okay. Remember, folks, I think the purpose of this was to give direction. And I think we're trying to pick this thing apart. I'm all for it, but I think great objections have been raised. I don't think you throw away the baby or the bathwater, whatever it is. The intent is good, the intent is honorable. I think we just need to work with it a little bit. Give you, for instance, over in Belmont, the Belmont Shopping Center's got a lot of vacant buildings. Well, if you can't rent them, you can't rent them. So
Standalone buildings or they're in the shopping center?
They're in the shopping center.
Okay, so those aren't counted, those
Dan and Alex chewed my rear end about, yes, they were. So if they're not supposed to be, okay, that's the thing, then if we're working that out and people are calling, working those things out, that's great. I'm afraid to ask this question, but if we're doing, if, if we're finding out what we think is vacant is based on water and power, should we just tell people the cause to turn on the water and power? Does that take them off the vacant list then?
No.
Well, three one-on-one Fairmont
If they're not, if they're not living in the house, if they're not living in the house, it's vacant. And these are some of the signs that they're not living in it.
Do we, okay, how do we know they're not vacant? I drove by thirty-one-on-one Fairmont, well-maintained rancher over by Centennial. They got, and the lady lives out of town, she got a letter. So how do they know? I mean, how's that considered vacant? They drove by, how would you know it's vacant? And, and, okay, I don't want to just complain. I, I want to figure, hopefully figure out a way to make this a little better, okay?
Do they have electric service there, gas service, water service?
You know, I didn't ask her. It sounds like I should tell her to get that and then it won't be vacant anymore.
And part of it is zero water use.
Perfect.
What, what they looked, that was zero water use over a certain number of months.
So if they turn, oh, water use, they can't just turn it on?
So they can't just turn, no, I mean, that, that, and I think that's a reasonable metric, at least to try to identify these things. If no one's using water at a house, then you can't reasonably say that someone's occupying that house, living in that residence. I mean, people, you have to have some water over a month, a three-month period.
Folks, again, I think
But if it's being maintained
Yeah.
and, and it's in good shape, why would they have to pay a, a five hundred dollar why would they have to pay a a five hundred dollar registry fee? I I don't.
I think I just need to, come on, you guys.
Problem and the nuisance and deal with those, not with some lady who lives out of town and is maintaining her property, you know?
These these houses are a problem because we have a housing shortage in this community. There's a shortage of affordable housing. Part of the reason for this passage of this ordinance was to put these properties back in productive use. That was part of the reason for this. Now, if you say, we don't need to do that, we don't worry about the housing shortage. You know, and as I said, these people can continue to do this. They can leave the house vacant for as long as they want to. They simply have to register and pay the five hundred dollars. That doesn't seem onerous to me.
It does to me.
Do I think that charging people five hundred bucks to rent their houses out is going to solve a hardworking problem? No. I really don't. Our housing problem started back in the early two thousands when we were building a thousand homes a year. And now this, I think, ends in the September, we're we're doing about twelve hundred. And then in September, right now, we're at five hundred and seventy four new homes. So we're only about halfway what we used to be. So that's the way we're going to cure that. And I'm, again, I like the idea and I think I think we just need to refine it maybe a little bit more. Maybe leniency is a way that boarded up broke down house, we want to get rid of, but I'm going to just throw it to you guys. How do we work this out where these people are out of town and they've got this house, maybe again, their their mother died in it and they don't want to sell it. They've got emotional reasons. They could care less about housing shortages in Pueblo, and they're never going to. Just, I think we keep, just keep working on this to make it better. The intent's honorable and the intent's the right thing to do. I got no problem with that. I think we just have to to make some.
I think we'll have in the next thirty days or so, a better idea of where this is at. Uh, in terms of the number of people that register, the number of people that have appealed, you know, everybody was notified if you don't call, and fourteen hundred people apparently did call. Six have filed appeals. Other appeals might be coming, but it might not be a bigger problem as you think it is.
Well, maybe I get more phone calls than you, but it is a problem with people. But again, if we're trying to work something out and get it done, I'm all for that. And if we have to somehow create a little more leniency, like a thirty one oh one Fairmont Avenue. It's the, in my mind, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
You know, one of the areas of vacant properties, I'm sure, especially these days, are houses that have been foreclosed on. And, you know, who knows who the banks are throughout the United States? They're not taking care of those properties. They could care less. Uh, so there there's an area that I think that's important we go after.
And they are subject to this ordinance.
They are subject to it, I know.
Yes, they are.
So there's no way that uh this is like a bizarre conversation to me. I mean, we created this seven zero and we're telling you guys that you did a bad thing here. We did it. And so we can change it, I guess, and it might be in just expanding uh the definition of vacancy. Um, and eliminating maybe some exceptions we didn't think about. You know, especially, you know, people that maybe were hurt by Covid and are just waiting to get out of this. But I think that's, that's, that might be the area that we focus on. And because it seems to me with your numbers that almost fifteen hundred were removed. So we still have eleven hundred, about eleven hundred out there that have not responded or yeah, and it doesn't look like many of them made a payment or have registered.
Six.
Six, half.
Yeah, so the registration is not due until the first of January, though. So there's three months yet for people to register.
I think we need to go back and and just rethink this. And if there's some tweaking we can do, um, I'd be for it. Uh, but I think we're going through an experimental piece right now just to see what evolves out of the letters that you've sent and uh the responses that we're getting. Uh, and it looks like uh the people that have appealed, uh, four out of the six, uh, you granted them you you said.
Two out of the six, we said, okay, it's not vacant. The other four have hearing set municipal court.
Okay.
And then findings will recommendations will be made to the mayor's office from the municipal court judge.
I'd I'd like to go, but I I do have a copy of the the ordinance and I'd like to go back and look at it for a while. But I don't think we're going to solve the problem tonight.
I think that, you know, my my perception when we did it was totally different than how it's ending up, obviously. My vision through this whole process was that we have to do some, all you hear about and all constantly is about how trashy our community is and all these boarded up nasty houses. They need to go away. We need to do something about that. My vision was is that this was going to take care of that. So I think it goes beyond what my vision was. And and it it it's taking, it's taking what's meant to be a good thing for the community and turning it into a bad thing. If the majority of the houses are nice houses that are well taken care of and in some kind of flux for whatever reason, why should we be wrong? Why should we not be okay with that? What we're not okay with are these boarded up nasty crack houses all littered all over town that need to go away. And we need to somehow spur on the ownership of those houses to do something about it. And it was my impression that that's what we were going to do. And and so, yeah, I'm with Counselor Flores and Counselor Winter on on that part and Counselor Tencio that that I think we need to relook at how we define what it is that we're looking at and what we're trying to accomplish. I I I think it's too broad, to tell you the truth. Counselor McCullough, Bichica.
Hi, um, I've also received many, many calls about this and people are very upset. Some of the concerns that they've raised is the cost is higher than their property taxes. Where did the five hundred dollars come from? How did you find that number, five hundred dollars? And then, um, where is this money going to? So can you answer that?
So uh, the number was picked, I mean, just it's almost, we were trying to decide what would be a reasonable amount. We want to spur people, as the mayor said, to put these houses to use. Um, and that's one part of the reason behind this. The other part of the reason behind this is because vacant properties are nuisance. Um, as uh Councilman Adolf said, you know, they they tend to attract homeless. They tend to attract uh drug activity, that kind of thing. And 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 to that point, you know, we we can go through and we can get rid of all the boarded up ones that we know are these uh crack houses, as you put it, but that's not going to stop the people that are using these houses for that purpose. They're going to go find other abandoned properties or F vacant properties. So we, I mean, the police are doing their best to shut down that that side of it, but uh they can't catch everyone. So that was the number we came to. Now, if council wants to change that number, um, I think that's certainly a an area where there's there's no legal requirement that it be five hundred dollars and a five hundred dollar failure to register fee. That was just the number that we came to based on our research of other uh cities that have implemented this kind of ordinance. So we kind of picked a middle ground and went with that. And I'm sorry, I I forgot your second question.
And they want to know where the money is going to.
I can't tell you that.
It just goes into the general fund. It goes into the general fund.
Council didn't think about maybe like earmarking the money if it's all about beautification, you know, maybe splitting the money between the different neighborhoods and putting it specifically for beautification.
I don't think we can earmark it, can we?
You can only create special funds. I don't know that you'd have to create a purpose for the special fund. Generally, you cannot earmark bunch for particular purposes and find subsequent. So you cannot earmark unless you create a special fund, and I don't know that this would fit the purposes of a special fund. Uh, otherwise you can earmark and find subsequent councils to the appropriation of funds.
And what about, you know, maybe a different rate for commercial buildings versus residential? Unless we just do away with all of it, but just some questions of us all.
Counselor Winner.
So most of the cities, um, when we researched this in twenty sixteen that had implemented this, because it was really popular in like twenty ten or so. Most of the cities just got rid of it because it just was too onerous and too labor intensive to to stay up on. There were even private companies that contracted with cities and said, hey, we'll look, we'll do it. And most of those cities, it was too labor intensive for them to as well. But um if we're if we're talking about direction tonight, what I would like to see on um next council meeting is to just abolish this ordinance completely and 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 talk about really concentrating on these on these problem properties. And and defining them as much money as we can so that those go on the tax door, and then we can foreclose on them and sell them and reestablish them. But but this is just a runaround. And then I got something else to say, but I don't want to go off track. So I I I'll I'll mention this at the end. So so I'm done.
So how does council want to move forward with this? You know, I would rather see that we bring it back in two weeks in a work session after you've heard everything that we're we're thinking about and with suggestions of how we could tweak it uh to where it's not doing the nasty part to the community that we're looking at these uh absolutely crappy houses.
The timeframe, it seems to me, is the important part. What what do you think? We should, uh, if it's been vacant a year, is that long enough? Should it be five years, ten years? How long you want to let them sit there before you say you got it registered as a vacant property? That's, I, it seems to me it's that timeframe. That's the important thing. What, Counselor Schelling?
Folks, we can't unring the bell. Letters have gone out. People have already realized that this is coming. And now to send out another letter creates more confusion in my mind. To me, we let it settle out. We come back in two weeks and see how we can tweak the next round of letters that would go out next year or whatever. But to unring the bell right now, to me, makes no sense.
Well, we don't plan to send letters out. The only reason we set a batch of letters out now is because we're just getting started. What we intend to do is monitor this as best we can. And when it comes to our attention that a property is vacant, send the property out immediately to to them at that point.
Just so, so the process where we're going from here, uh, we've talked about all the appeals, everything that's done with the letters. Starting January one, code enforcement is going to go out and they're going to look for these properties. If they find a property that they believe is vacant, it's the ordinance, they'll issue a notice of violation, tell them you have to register your house. Register their house or their business, fine. They're on the registry. That's all they have to do. If they don't, then code enforcement will draft a lien that says uh it's for the five hundred dollar registry and the five hundred dollar fine for failure to register. That lien will go through finance and be recorded with the county. So that's how it's, just so counsel, that's how it's going to look going forward once we get into the actual enforcement phase. As I said, right now, we're in an informational phase.
Are we given rebates? I pay you five hundred bucks and next day I got it rented. It's no longer vacant. You're going to pay me a rebate? I mean, I don't know how complicated you want to make this.
I mean, it's not, it's not in there. So no, it's a, it's a annual fee. So if it's uh vacant for a period of the year, then that's a five hundred dollar fee.
So they pay the five hundred bucks, rented the next day, it's no longer vacant, but that's the way it's going to go?
Uh, that's that's the way the ordinance.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. So what do we want? Do we want it to come back in two weeks with more information and you look at uh you should probably have some direction, though. I think that council president and possibly Counselor Winner work with you to look at the language that they believe is.
I I want to get rid of it.
So you don't want to work on any change?
No, I think I think we really need to focus on this.
Well, the intent, like Bob said, and uh was the right thing to do, but we're just implementing.
Yeah, it's just a big rabbit hole.
When you think you're a hammer, everything's a nail out there. We can't be hitting people over the head every time we turn around just because we think we can. Uh, we we've got to try to do right by people. And and there are properties out there, and there are a lot of them that may be empty, but they're not abandoned. And the it's the abandoned problem properties that we have to deal with, not a property that's that's going to, what if it becomes vacant between now and the the beginning of the year?
Mark, ask you a question?
It's just, it just keeps going.
No, I don't want to get rid of it completely. I want to deal with the prob- problem properties. If this ordinance deals with those, I'm all in. If it's not doing the job that it's supposed to be, and I'm with Winner and I'll get rid of it.
Kyle, we'll talk to you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, budget work session, Mayor, Ms. Solano. Um, we'll wait till the end.
Okay.
Is there something on this?
Well, no, no.
Chairman and members of the council. So you all got a copy now of the hard, hard-covered budget.
Yeah, sure.
I suspect that you have some uh questions about it or suggestions. We'll try to talk about that. And if we can't answer the question, we'll we'll get the, see the experts online, so she will um answer the question. But this is, I think, a time for us to begin a discussion with the council about your review of the budget, what you think, what you'd like to see changed, what you'd like to see.
Questions, comments, anybody? Uh, Counselor Winner?
Yeah, my brief is the same with every year on the eight hundred thousand dollars that we give the chamber for marketing. Um, I brought this up last year that I wanted, that I think we should hire a professional marketing company. We actually had a a marketing company come and present to us and um to show us what we were kind of missing out on. And I think uh, I think that that we had three council members that that voted for using a big portion of that money toward a marketing company. So that's I mean, I can say that right now, um, but I I still have an issue with that.
Counselor Flores?
I I just have a a question about what approach I would use. I've, at a retreat, I had started talking about a dashboard, an economic dashboard that I think's really important. It's, to me, it's like a roadmap of all decisions that we make. And my question is whether or not that could be done by just adding it to the budget directly, or whether I have to go through a full-blown ordinance to get it approved. It just seems like it'd be a lot easier just to include it into uh the, into your budget, really.
Yeah, refresh my recollection.
It's it's the uh
Amount, the amount.
It's it's about, I I had, it's about three hundred thousand, but that was for two years. So it's, you know, all we can do is just add it for one year. I think it's either between one fifty to one eighty, uh, you know, for the for the whole year. And this council and the whole community would get the dashboard on a monthly basis, which currently we don't have. And all of uh, all of the progressive cities up north have this. And they are doing some amazing stuff with it.
Yeah, but the business communities have cooperated with the cities up there. The cities up north have not taken it on themselves. And that's where I, that's where I'm at. If we have some other partners in it, I think I certainly would be willing to throw in the city's share.
Yeah, this is a situation where we're just starting the engine. It's not a it's not a government program that we're going to have to carry. It's it's a two-year period uh that I want to start the engine. And in the start of the third year, the business community takes it over. And that's how they've done all of these up north in Fort Collins, in Boulder, in Grand Junction, in El Paso County. Uh, because it takes time to get the sponsorship for it. But once they see this, uh, so it's not, it's not something that's going to be in stone for forever. It's just for two years. And as far as the budget, all we're doing is just allocating that money for one year. And I'll have to, we'll have to come back next year for the second year.
I would be um for that. Sorry to speak out of turn, but I think maybe if we need a full-blown ordinance on that, I think that's fine.
I I just want. Well, I mean, if if there are four council members that want to put this in, you know, we'll try to figure out a way to do it.
Who would be doing the administration?
Well, it's, again, I forgot what her name is. It's Dusha Titiana Bailey with UCCS. Uh, she doesn't need any guidance. She's, she's the expert and she'll present the report on a monthly basis.
It's basically a dashboard of economic data. It's basically a dashboard of economic data, the current economic data that's available out there. She just sort of puts it all together.
Yeah, it was a great report. Great report, great tool. You know, I would support it.
That's three, four?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Council Shelling?
My request isn't for as much money. You know, was it last week, two weeks ago?
Yeah, a lady who works for Parks Department, she's part-time and does all that work cleaning up the needles and cleaning up the parks and stuff. And we're always complaining about that sort of, sort of thing. And I would really like to see that position made a full-time position. She works her butt off and, and does everything every day. She's out there working with volunteers and things like that. And we're complaining about the place looking nice. And here we have somebody that's working her butt off to help us look that way. And I'd like to see that be a full-time position. That's my only thing. Thank you.
Laura, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, City Council. In order to make these modifications to the budget, which of course we can do, we're going to need an actual amount for, um, Tatiana's. And the definition of dashboard, the RIT director called the next morning after last week's presentation and, and comments about dashboard. Our current open gov, um, software will, has the capacity for a dashboard, however, it's from internal operations. And so when I explain that to Lori, this one is the economic conditions external to the operations of current city government. So there really is, uh, to two definitions of dashboard. And then also the whatever Dr. Bailey, um, his results, we can actually place, um, on our website and be accessible for everyone. So, um, back to the dash, use of dashboard, I really just need, uh, no, we, we do, we can use both, but I, I really just need us, an amount certain to, to add to the budget. And the second, with respect to the part-time individual in parks, um, you know, the city, um, directors, um, meet, um, with the mayor and the, and myself and Anna, and they prioritized on the positions that they requested. This particular position, remember, she's not working with volunteers. She's working under the ARPA agreement. Um, and she's actually working with, um, the homeless that are taking advantage of that four-day-a-week cleanup for four hours a day. There were some additional pieces of equipment that she, I think she mentioned also, that we brought to the attention of Stephen Meyer. Um, but that particular position, I don't know, um, uh, without asking Stephen what this person would be doing for a full twelve months. But we can get that information.
Well, we don't want to get in trouble.
Well, there's one, one additional problem with that, too. This is a part-time position. When you make it full-time, then you get into civil service issues. You can't just make it full-time and give it to this person.
Well, I, I understand that. She'd have to apply. But if you got somebody that knows how to do the job, that seems really simple. I don't know. She does, does a great job and I can use her all the time. I think that would be very beneficial to the city.
Could you, uh, cause this happened with Nathaniel Evans as well. He did a really good job. And then they wanted to hire him full-time and then he went through civil service and blah, blah, blah. And it went to somebody else. So you, you write about that. But if you could share her between departments, maybe, um, that might work out.
If she isn't the best one, I'm not trying to get her a job. I'm just trying to make that whole position full-time. Cause it's certainly necessary. And if she doesn't qualify or doesn't get it, I don't care. I just think that the position is beneficial.
When we met with the Director of Parks and Rec, he presented, when we met with the Director of Parks and Recs, he presented probably eight to ten positions that he would request it in priority order. And I'm not certain where this one would fall, but I'm certain that in response to the councilman's suggestion of a full-time position, he would have just said yes. But, you know, there were other priority positions that he requested that, um, the mayor could not fund because of, of budget constraints. So I can, may I go back and, and ask Stephen about the priority order for this position?
I don't want to get him in trouble.
Nice job, Bob.
Just anything to help make the city look nicer. I'm all for that. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I felt that, uh, we had consensus on city council several weeks ago when we talked about the HARP authority. And I would sure like to see that happen and they get their request. And I have a second question on the budget itself. Is that I was reading the, uh, the budget message as I, I went through this. And obviously I didn't pay attention last week or I probably wouldn't have to ask this question. But this budget that's in my hand, is, this is contingent upon two A passing?
If, if two A doesn't pass, yeah, we'll have to do some different things because we'll have to plan on.
Okay, so how can we, how can we have discussions or plans if we don't have the right numbers?
We don't know we don't have the right.
Well, I thought we had a discussion that we said that we were going to look at a, at, at the numbers based on if two A didn't pass, what were the numbers?
Well, this, this budget is not that. This budget is not if two A didn't pass. This, this budget is premised upon the fact that two A passes. If two A doesn't pass, between, uh, the second of November and when you have to finalize the budget, you'll get a different proposed budget from me.
So we'll have two weeks to go through it.
Yeah, well, it, it won't be any more than this, I guarantee you. You'll see a lot less money in that budget than.
Well, can you, can you give us an idea?
Well, it's probably going to be at least, uh, six million dollars less.
Okay. And, and why is that? When?
Because we'll have to reserve, we estimate that our twenty twenty excess funds, well, probably seven million dollars, because we know we have five hundred seventy-six thousand dollars in excess from twenty twenty. We estimate that we'll have, uh, a little over, maybe six and a half million in excess funds in twenty twenty-one. So we'll have to, the budget will have to reflect holding that so it can be repaid.
Or another, or, or another ballot measure in twenty twenty-two.
Well, I think we, I, I'm not an expert on tables, so I don't know how long we have to refund that money.
Right.
Uh, I would assume with respect to the twenty twenty, five hundred seventy-six thousand, if it doesn't pass, we have.
So in reality, we're only, we're only responsible in twenty twenty-two for the five hundred and seventy-six thousand, regardless of how two A goes.
Yeah. For paying it back? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if you do, Bob.
Well, that's what the ballot measure says.
It says what?
The five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars?
That we'd be allowed to keep that.
Correct.
Right.
So that's what we would be on the hook for in this budget?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Hey, go ahead, Council Winner.
So, uh, did you, did, did council realize that in our codes, we have a code that's section seven dash four dash one point five that says the city council shall, shall serve, the little, the city councils shall serve as the undesirable plant management advisory commission for, for the real property within the city to pursue the stated objectives and intent of the Colorado Weed Management Act. The president and the secretary of the city council shall annually serve as chairperson and secretary of the undesirable plant management advisory commission. And it goes on.
Yeah, you, you didn't know that?
No. So is this another ordinance, hundred eighty-six?
I don't know what that is.
Well, it's, it's in our codes.
Undesirable weeds.
And, and we're responsible for it. We're, we're supposed to manage undesirable plants.
So what's the code section?
Uh, section seven dash four dash one point five. I just, I just briefly went through chapter seven because it has all of the, um, things that we talked about today in it. So I was just reviewing and I found that. I thought it was definitely something that Mark wanted to, um, to, to be the chairperson of.
I, um, I'm the only one on that committee. Anything else? So you guys will look into that?
Well, yeah, make a note. If, uh, if it's obsolete, we could take it out. We make it all that, Bob.
There's one additional, Mr. Mayor, and that's, uh, Council McCully Bichica submitted the request, uh, from Public Works Budget today.
Yes.
Would that be non-departmental or because it's for the CSRP group? So for people that don't know who the CSRP group, it's the, um, Bessemer Eilers Grove Group. They came probably two months ago. Um, mayor definitely told them how supportive he was of them. They talked about the art and the history walk. I think it would cost anywhere from like twenty-five hundred to five thousand at the most to maintain that. Um, they look forward to working on other projects in the future. So they're hoping that the city will take charge of this program. And, um, I don't think that it would be a huge investment unless there was any kind of damage, to tell you the truth. And the city's doing the signs for them.
The city's doing the signs?
Yes.
So, okay.
The city's making the signs for them. And, well, they have to, they have to fall into a certain kind of protocol. So Andrew's been working on that with them. Um, so I was just hoping that we can get that, those funds for our group.
That was the funds for the sign, right? For the signs?
To maintain in case there is any kind of damage.
Yeah. So let, let me have a conversation with Mr., with Public Works and we'll figure out how we'll do that. But, yeah, the amount they requested seemed reasonable to me. We'll somehow make that work.
It could even be five hundred one year. It's, you're not going to spend the whole amount. It's just whatever's needed.
Well, the question is, I guess, is do we give them the money or we just repair the signs when they, we'll have to figure out.
Yeah, they even tried to factor, um, employee wages in it because they figured city employees would be doing it. So.
Yeah. So if we do, we probably don't have to have them in the budget. We just have to make arrangements, make sure it gets done when it needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
All righty then, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, pound four, pound E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes to instruct negotiators regarding economic development projects proposed by the Poro Economic Development Corporation. Second. Okay?